I think the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given and notice having been transmitted to the Courier-News and the Star-Ledger on Monday, January 7, 2013, as well as posted on the bulletin board in the City Clerk's office. Um, Mr. Clerk, Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilwoman Louisa Brown, Ashley Dawn Lofell, Reeves, Matt, Storch, Williams, Ashley Dawn Lofell, Jim Reed, Council President Rivers.
Yes.
Five members of the Council President's two back, so we have a point.
Madam Clerk, do we have any communications from the mayor?
None at this time.
Um, any other communications or petitions?
No, Madam President.
Um, all the financial reports, everyone received them? Did you get any financial reports?
None at this time.
Reports of special committees?
None at this time.
Okay, then we have the discussion items. Um, I have allotted time for a presentation from, um, PSENG. Are they here? Come to the mic, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, honorable members of the council and members of the public. My name is Jamar Tendell and I am the State Energy Policy Manager of PSENG. I'm grateful for the council to give me some time this evening to discuss PSENG's infrastructure investment proposal entitled "Energy Strong." I'm actually wearing two hats tonight. One representing PSENG, which is New Jersey's oldest and largest electric utility, but I'm also here my capacity as a Plainfield resident. The council is well aware of the extreme weather events Plainfield has experienced over the last several years and the extended power outages that came along with it. Just last year during Superstorm Sandy, I personally was out of power for eight days. And I'm certain that many of you here today have experienced a similar situation. It is because of storms like Sandy, as well as Hurricane Irene and the October 2011 ice storm, that PSENG has taken the initiative to propose investments that will make our electric and gas systems more resilient to storms of the future. And PSENG can take advantage of current working conditions to keep customer bills stable, all the while creating jobs. Energy Strong has received widespread support, including many of Plainfield's sister towns throughout this county and across the Garden State. And it is my hope that the Queen City will join the chorus of local governments that declare that the status quo is unacceptable and therefore endorse Energy Strong. Um, if I still have a few moments, I'm happy to explain a bit more about the proposal to the council.
Thank you.
Energy Strong is a $3.9 billion infrastructure investment proposal over a 10-year period. $2.6 billion for the first five years, with an optional $1.3 billion for the next five years. We filed this program with the Board of Public Utilities, our regulator, back in February of this year. And there are a series of investments that are part of this proposal. First, we wish to protect the 31 switching and substations that were impacted by recent storms, including the Seaworn Switch that serves Plainfield. We also want to replace and modernize approximately 750 miles of low-pressure cast iron gas mains in our near flood areas. We want to deploy smart grid technologies to better monitor systems' operations and increase our ability to make repairs swiftly. We want to improve pole distribution systems by including more nonwet poles and die anchors to the ground. We want to create more redundancy in our systems. And being trained as an engineer, I understand that you want to have backups and backups for your backups. We've identified and looking into 20 miles of overhead electric construction that we wish to move underground. And finally, we have, we're looking into nine gas metering stations and liquefied natural gas stations that we would like to do some storm, storm carboning. And what I mean by storm carboning, both from a gas and electric perspective, is putting flood walls in place, razor in place, and to help them withstand storm surges like we saw during Superstorm Sandy. We believe the time is right to make these investments for several reasons. First, market conditions will help offset the costs and help to keep customer bills stable. We had the regulation charges coming off the bill over the next few years as a result of the long past, the late 1990s. We also have low natural gas prices thanks to the Shell gas boom or fracking, as you may have heard of it in the news. Also, customers will pay back over the life of the assets that we're investing, about 40 to 60 years. That can analogize to a mortgage. A 30-year mortgage is cheaper than a 10-year mortgage. Beyond these market conditions, we also believe the economic benefits that consider the stimulus to the Garden State as well as to this county. New Jersey has consistently faced a high unemployment average beyond the national average. We know that New Jersey and Plainfield need jobs. And we project that Energy Strong will create about 5,800 jobs over the course of the 10-year program. As I mentioned earlier, there are some benefits to Plainfield. The Seaworn Switch that serves Plainfield is one of the stations that is identified to receive some of the storm carboning procedures for Energy Strong. Also, a number of substations in our electric network that are part of a group of 61 stations that have experienced flooding in the recent past will be identified and worked on. And finally, we project about $300 million in local spends to Union County over the 10-year program. We've not been able to dictate that down to a municipal, municipality by municipality level, but we do believe that this will help the entire county, including Plainfield. Where we currently stand at the Board of Public Utilities is that a hearing officer, Commissioner Feard Elise of the DPU, has been named to oversee the day-to-day hearings. We recently had the public comment in September and October through a series of public hearings. The first was in Newark on September, uh, September 16th. The second was in New Brunswick on September 19th. And the last was in Cherry Hall on October 7th. And we expect evidentiary hearings to commence in the new year. Energy Strong has received extensive support from businesses, the chambers of commerce, the labor unions, and nonprofits. The nonprofits are healthcare institutions and education institutions, including Union County College. And again, 80 local governments have adopted formal resolutions endorsing this program. And we have County of Union, Clark, Cranford, Fannwood, Garwood, Hillside, Kennelworth, Linden, Mountainside, Raway, Roselle, Roselle Park, Scotch Plains, Union Township, and Westfield. As I ask that Plainfield join the chorus of governments supporting this program. There any further questions?
Any questions?
Yes, ma'am. How much are you going to spend over the next 10 years? You said?
Uh, $3.9 billion over a 10-year period, uh, $2.6 for the first five, and an optional $1.3 for the next five.
Okay. Then you're saying that the customers, us?
Yes.
Who get electric and gas from our services, will have to pay that?
We are confident we can keep customer bills stable because market-
Meaning, stable, meaning the same as is now, or stable meaning that you're gonna take the 10, uh, billions of dollars and fund it in? How are you gonna stabilize it?
Well, conditions are always flexible, Councilman, uh, but what we predict is, you know, if we didn't have the deregulation charges, if we didn't have the low gas prices due to fracking, if we didn't have, you know, will the rates potentially go up? Yes, that's a possibility, but again, because we have these market conditions that allow us to make these investments and allow them to be offset, we think that this is the time to make these investments because they'll have minimal impact on customers, but also we don't want to have people out for days, weeks on end when we need to have things done to our system.
Yes, but then you're still not saying approximately how much will our bills go up over the next few years. Stabilization, to me, means that you stabilize it where it is now. I don't hear that from you. Am I correct?
Um, if you mean as in for them to stay static, then that's what I mean, whether they fluctuate up or down a little bit.
Yeah, because of the situation, not because of the way you get your raises now.
So I say that again, Councilman?
Because of the situation of this Energy Strong program. You're putting that on top of what you normally increase us by? Or is it that you, our service, is gonna absorb all that money and not charge the customers for this Energy Strong program?
Well, Councilman, what we have to do is we have to make these investments and we have to be able to recover for those investments. We are a public utility. We have to be responsible not only to our customers, but to our shareholders, to the communities we serve. But again, we have to understand that because of these extreme weather events we've had, that we need to make sure that we're doing something to our system. And we can do this by keeping the customer bills stable. I am not a finance person, so I don't know the specific details of how much they could fluctuate due to whether fracking conditions can change that tomorrow or the like, but we're pretty confident that we can keep them stable and make these investments. But also, we are gonna create jobs for the state in design and-
I am, sir. Uh, the other thing, you said you're gonna take, uh, what, 20 miles of overhead line and put them in the ground?
Yes, sir.
Is it, uh, how many miles of Plainfield is included in that proposal?
We're still looking into that, and one of the things we have to do is because we're in an ongoing dialogue with the Board of Public Utilities, we have to make sure that we're not necessarily tying ourselves because the board wants to be able to have therein for two. But also, one of the things about undergrounding is we want to make sure we're targeting areas that experience significant impact during Superstorm Sandy. We had 48,000 trees fall in our service territory during that storm, so we want to make sure that we're taking a holistic approach, but also giving our regulators an opportunity to comment on where they think that can help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions to my left? See you in the, to my right?
Okay, and the council would like a copy of the list of supporters that I mentioned before I can just grab the, whatever.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. We have no unfinished business. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, and good evening, and it's always a pleasure, as I say, to see so many people interested in the conducting of business and the governing body of the city of Plainfield. Consideration of public hearings and second reading and final passage of an artness section, MC 2013-9, which is an artness on the second and reading and final passage to amend and supplement Chapter 13 of Streets, Sidewalks, Article 6 and Encroachments on Streets and Sidewalks, Section 13, Colon, 6, dash, 1 of the Municipal Code of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, 1971. Are there any questions for our colleagues, and do we place it on the agenda to, uh, be considered tonight?
Yes.
Okay, it's placed on the agenda, and it's a voting, as I understand it, right? Resolutions and new business on Section 8 of this agenda. Item A is a councilmatic resolution, certified review of the 2012 audit report, and that's coupled with the requirement of the group's affidavit. I don't think they have any problems with that, Madam President.
No.
Any questions from anyone? B, councilmatic resolution approving a person-to-person transfer of the retail distribution license 2012-44-015-03 from the Pryon Inc., trading as the Rye House, to the Hema Puja, Puja LLC, also trading as Rye House Spirits, at 128 Taylor Road. Should I put that on the agenda? It's recommended for approval by the Police Division, and I think the last time we had a problem with that, they had not paid that package or something.
You know, the issue at that time was, uh, applicants required to, uh, give notice with the newspaper, uh, a certain timeframe in advance prior to council consideration, and if they had not been done, they hadn't met those requirements.
Okay. Is there anyone who has any questions?
Um, Mr. Chairman, if you could, we're also establishing what the consent agenda is for the regular meeting at this time as well, so we-
Okay, item A, which was the certification of the audit, that cannot be a, uh, that has to be a vote, right?
It could be consent.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, anyone have any objection? The second one?
Yes.
Okay, C, councilmatic resolution conveying the deepest sympathy to the family of Barbara Tracy Sanford on the occasion of her passing.
Yes.
Okay, that would be a consent.
Yes.
Very minor revisions, but I think it should be from the whole council.
Okay.
You think it should be what?
It should be from the whole council. No, it's a resolution.
Thank you.
Instead of saying introduced by council, Mr. Stewart, it will say introduced by-
Oh, okay, yeah, I understand, thank you.
This, by the way, this, uh, no, this is for, this is to honor the accomplishments of Barbara Sanford, who passed away recently. And her, there's gonna be a memorial service for her this Saturday at, I believe it's at 1 o'clock at, where, Grace Church? Crescent Avenue Church.
Thank you. And that would be on the consent.
Is there consensus for the consent agenda?
Yes.
Item D, councilmatic resolution in support of the PSENG's Energy Trade, Energy Strong program.
Yes.
And is that a, uh, is that a consent or not?
Yes.
Thank you. On the administration and executive branch, there are no resolutions. Cooperation council?
If I may, under administration and executive branch, on behalf of the mayor and the administration, has an item to be added to this agenda for a street encroachment for the Plainfield Fever Children Program to be held on November 25, 2013. Is there consensus to add this item to the agenda?
And where's the street? Which street?
Uh, street encroachment on the 700 block of South Second Street.
Yes.
Any opposition to adding that to the agenda? Any further questions? What street was that again, Mr. President?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, that would be the, uh, 700 block of South Second Street.
Okay.
I have a quick question. Is there any reason why that didn't come through the clerk's office?
Uh, there is no reason, House President. Nothing I can give.
Okay.
Thank you. So that's on the agenda, and that will be a consent or a voting. Consent, thank you.
Yes.
Under cooperation council?
No, I, Mr. Chairman.
Wow, good. Item E, which is under Department of Administration and Finance, a resolution authorizing an approval to submit an application to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, the Division of Housing and Community Resources, for the Community Service Block Grant Fund for the initial amount of $65,175. Any objection, they're placing that on the agenda?
No.
And I think that should be a voting, uh, resolution because it involves money. Any objections?
It's up to the council.
Yeah, that's my recommendation, whether it-
Anybody have a problem with it, um, bone and consent?
I think in all fairness to my colleague, first, when he comes a member can pull an item off the consent agenda, so if he wants it to be non-consent, I think it should be-
Thank you. Item F, resolution authorizing approval to amend the calendar year 2013 municipal budget by inserting special items of revenue and appropriation in accordance with the New Jersey statute 48, colon, 4, dash, 87. Any questions or comments as it relates to that?
None.
Okay, that's on the agenda, and that should be a voting resolution, it seem like to be. G, resolution requesting change in title, text, or amount of appropriation pursuant to NJAS 48, 4, dash, 85. Any, uh, problems with adding that to the agenda?
No.
And that also, since it's appropriation, should be a voting, in my opinion. Anyone have any objections? No. H, resolution authorizing the cancellation of outstanding state and federal grant balances. And I do have a question from, hi, Mrs. Mayor.
Oh, no way.
Just by, um, why do we have to cancel these grant balances? Is it a small, something happened that we couldn't complete what we said we were going to do?
Mr. Chairman, um, and I believe Ms. Sheriff Bono may be here as well to answer this, but I'll try to answer your question as best I can. Basically, these are old state and federal grants that, for the purposes of housekeeping, need to be removed, uh, from existence by the city. So, in essence, we're cleaning up old grants that are no longer in existence with the city.
Okay, so the, the balances were canceled by the grant person that gave us the money, we just didn't use all of it, so we have to clean up the-
In some instances, the money was in fact used, uh, but was never accounted for, uh, with the city's books, therefore, we are cleaning up all these old accounts per the, uh, the recommendations of the audit findings.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
I, I asked a similar question of, um, Mr. Restano, who, um, can't be here tonight, but he did email a response, and I just want to share it. And this is in relation to the NEC grant, which was the disaster national emergency grant, and the, um, the WIC grant, and the ARA grant, that's the, that's the, um, um, the recovery, you know, I guess from, well, no, this, this, the recovery money goes back to, um, the, the economic woes and having the federal funds to stimulate the economy. So, you know, the grant money took a while to get out to the counties and the states. We did get some of it. Anyway, Director Restano's response was the city did not hire enough people for this, for this grant based on the timing of receipt and the hiring process. That was the response for the NEC and the WIC grant. He didn't explain the other one. But, in effect, we didn't spend all the money, and it's still not clear from his response why we didn't spend the money. So, even though I support putting this on the agenda and voting yes for it, we still need an explanation of why the city did not spend the funds, because these are, these are important projects and meeting very important needs that we may not have fully met for some reason. We need to know why.
Okay, what is the council's desire with respect to this resolution? I should be put it on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, it's on the agenda, should it be a voting or a consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Okay.
This was H, correct?
That was H. It was H.
Yes, that's right.
That's right. I, resolution approving the corrective action plan for the fiscal year 2012 audit and recommendation and its submission to the Division of Local Services.
Yes.
And Madam President, may I say that this audit appeared to me to be one of the better ones that I've seen. It wasn't perfect, but it was a great, great improvement over previous audit with findings, and it is less this time. So, hopefully, we got started on the right track of eliminating some of our problems here, uh, with our record-keeping and finance department. And I think that we should add this to the agenda.
Yes.
Yeah, I do too. I do want, also, to make a comment that, um, I, I don't share the positive, you know, I'm not saying that Councilman Reed has a positive view of this, we're saying it's better than it was.
Yeah.
And I will agree with that, but it's not good. One of the findings was, we did not have, we did not follow up monthly procedure for reconciling the general ledger. That, that's like a really basic function and operation, and we need to get that fixed. And we better get that fixed in January or February, because that, that's, that's a serious problem.
Well, I think you should, uh, send that message to our next mayor, Jimmy Nez.
Yep.
Smiley, he's gonna take care of that. So that would go on the agenda.
Yes.
Consent or non-consent? And I think that should be a non-consent because it's a corrective action. Let's go now, uh, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Consent or non-consent? Consent or none?
I would say non-consent.
Non-consent.
Yes. You got that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes. One person says non-consent, it's only non-consent. Yeah, that's right.
That's right. Thank you. Item J, resolution authorizing approval for the finance chief, for the chief financial officer to cancel inactive sewer balances. But it on the agenda?
Yes.
Consent or non-consent? Okay, one person said none, so that's it. Item K, resolution authorizing the transfer between the calendar year 2013 appropriation of the general fund of the city, uh, Plainfield. On the agenda?
Yes.
I, I have a comment about this one.
Sure.
This, uh, there's numerous, uh, transfer items, which is, you know, typical for, you know, budget or size. And I think, I think they all make sense except for one.
What's the one?
There is one that transfers $131,000 into the police department, and this, this, um, is associated with that transfer of seven sergeants to, um, to seven lieutenant promotions. Not a transfer, it's a, it's a promotion. I think it's really inappropriate. I think it's, it does happen in government, and certainly in New Jersey government, to have lame duck appointments and expenditures, and I, I don't think it's good government, even though it happens. This is not good government. And this is beyond, I think, the normal lame duck actions. This is a major action that's going to impact our city, our finances, for many, many years to come. I'm not saying we shouldn't promote people, but seven promotions at the very end of a term? That, it's just inappropriate, totally inappropriate. So, I, I, when we get to this, when we get to the voting on this, I'm going to make an amendment to take that out and keep everything else in. But I'm okay with moving this to the agenda, because I do think the other items are in the category of just keeping the city running, um, making sure we have enough money to pay our bills. The, the other items, I believe, are appropriate.
Okay, I'd like to hear from the, uh, police directives here. If not, anyone else can represent this transfer? Okay, it's on the consent, it's on the agenda?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Well, in reference, well, I, I'm, I'm, uh, in opposition to what my colleague, Councilman Stewart, said. I spoke with Mr. Restano today, uh, in reference to the burden that this transfer would have on the city, and he indicated to me that there would be no burden, that the taxpayer's money would not be compromised at all, it's just moving a budget item, but it's the same budget.
Thank you. It's on the agenda then, and it'd be a voting one, and if somebody else want to-
Yeah, I do have a-
Sure.
Comment on this resolution as well, and I'll save some of my comments for later, when we come to the voting. But one of the things that I will say has to do with the amount in here for the PMUA, $163,000 being transferred to the PMUA. Can I get someone from the administration to explain why?
Councilman, I'll, I'll try to address that for you. It's my understanding, my conversation with Mr. Restano earlier today, that we were in the receipt of FEMA funds. We, unfortunately, the PMUA could not directly receive those funds per FEMA regulations. Therefore, uh, we did receive, uh, evidence that this money was expended from the PMUA. We forwarded that to FEMA, and FEMA gave us the money for us to then reimburse the PMUA. So we act as a pass-through, uh, for these FEMA dollars. This is not in essence an, an extra payment to the PMUA. This is not, in essence, an extra payment to the PMUA.
Was this a grant that was received by the city?
I would say it was, it's FEMA funds. I would, I don't know if you could characterize it as a grant, but it was definitely emergency aid given from FEMA.
Then it's a grant.
Yep.
My issue with this is that you cannot transfer grants. And so, this cannot be a part of this resolution. Grants are in the budget when the grant is adopted. If the grants are not received at a time, they are pulled into the budget by way of what is known as chapter 159. After that, all grants are swept out of the budget into what is known as the grant fund, and there's burdens must have to be made for the grant fund. So, there's no such thing as a transfer when it comes to that.
It's not a grant. What is it? Councilman, only thing I can add to that is that I did have, I just heard from the, our OEM coordinator, who did offer that this was considered a reimbursement and not a grant per se. Evidence of expenditures was provided to FEMA, just if that aids in your, in your deliberations.
It doesn't matter. There are only three ways you can spend money, and whether it's a reimbursement or not, it doesn't matter. This is a grant.
Moving right along, I'll comment on this, on the budget items also during the voting session.
Okay, that'd be on the resolution and if there are voting items. Item L, this one, yeah. Resolution authorizing approval to cancel current account outstanding checks due to budget operations. Any comments? Okay, it's on the agenda? Should it be...
Uh, this is item L?
Yes. Should it be a voting item at the later on, or consent?
Consent.
Consent. Item M, resolution authorizing a refund of overpaid taxes totaling $174,943.30 on 114 properties. Okay. Item N, resolution authorizing adjustments to 11 tax accounts due to county tax court judgments totaling $46,580.80 in tax reduction.
Questions?
Yes.
There's, there, one of the, one of the items, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with this either, but one of the items is a $3,000 reduction in assessed value. So, we, on this one transaction, we've lost 21, over $21,000 a year in taxes. Just curious to know what the property is. It must be a big property. So, do we have somebody here that can answer that question?
Certainly. Dave Marshall from the Tax Collector's Office, our tax collector, Dave Marshall, is here. Maybe we can speak to him.
Hi, Dave Marshall, tax collector. Thank you for having me.
Is that Mike from John?
Hello? I might use the public speaker. This property, I made a printout of it. It's a vacant, I don't know whether it's an apartment building or whatever, but the assessor, she approved it, and before she approves it with the county, she has to go before the council, so you guys must have known about this before. So, the taxes for 2012 were $31,751.60. For 2013, it went down to $11,066.28. I spoke with the property owner today, because he came in, because there's also a lien on his property, um, and he told me that the property is vacant, so, you know, he's going through some hard times, and he's gonna rehab it and get it back on the tax roll at full value ASAP.
What's the, do we have an address?
Um, 808-14 Central Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Stewart?
Is the address again?
808-14 Central Avenue.
Is that the Avon Matic?
Avon Matic.
Was that on... That was on the tax sale list, wasn't it?
Yes.
And can you explain again what you were just explaining?
Um, what respect? The 2013, 2012 taxes were $31,751.60 due to this county appeal. 2013 taxes went down to $11,066.28. I had a conversation with the property owner today, and he's saying that it's a vacant piece of property, and, you know, he is, the assessor, and, and he, you know, it's, before they go to the county, you guys have to approve that, let's go into the county, too. So, you had to prove it back then. Is it because of the dollar amount that you're questioning it now? I don't understand.
Is this amount put into that long property?
Yes.
The tax sale was how much money?
That's irrelevant.
The tax sale was how much money?
Don't know. Don't know.
Okay. Those haven't been relevant. I have a reason for asking. In terms of this particular item, if you have any thoughts, what amount would the assessment in terms of taxes?
The prior, the old assessed value in total was $453,400. The new assessed value, $153,400. So, a reduction in assessed value of $300,000, which equates to a tax reduction of $21,642.
Now, you also said, excuse me, sir, that we, they're gonna rehab it, and that it will be reassessed at that point at the rehab value?
The moment it's taxable, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna go back up. Should I put that on the agenda for Google, Mr. Mapp?
Yes.
Okay, and you'll have to vote on it. Oh.
And then non-consent?
Yes, that's a non-consent voting. Resolution authorizing approval of the renewal and acceptance of funds with the State of New Jersey Department of Education Child and Adult Food Program for the Plainfield Bi-Langual Daycare Center in the amount of $72,550.80. Any questions? That's good? Okay, on the agenda, and that would be a voting item.
Consent or non-consent?
No, not the consent. You gotta vote on it. Non-consent. Under Department of Public Affairs and Safety, resolution authorizing approval to conduct a public auction of abandoned and unclaimed motor vehicles. Questions on the agenda?
Yes.
Consent item? Okay. Q, resolution to accept New Jersey Department of Highway and Traffic Safety 2014 drive sober or get pull over statewide end-of-the-year holiday crackdown rant? Consent, and I'll pick you to reject that. Hopefully, no one get caught driving un-sobered, please. A resolution authorizing the fire division to salvage two 1988 Pierce Fire Injuries to area salvage yards.
Yes, yes.
Okay, do we get any money for this?
Yeah, but we don't know how much.
That's correct. We attempt to get the best price possible.
What's that again?
We, uh, the city will attempt to get the best price possible at salvage.
I recall that they gave a fire truck to one of the, I think it's Dominican Republic. Are these operational, and can they be transferred to a fire department that's not equipped as we did on that previous truck?
I do believe Chief Tidwell is here, and he can speak to whether or not they can be donated as opposed to sent to salvage.
But why be the one?
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Council.
How are you?
In regards to the two 1988 Pierce pumpers, they are actually junked. They're in the back of our station, in Engine 3 station. They've been there for about six, seven years. We have actually stripped them for additional parts that we needed for other apparatus. So, basically, we cannot auction them. We tried to auction them, that fell through. We wanted to donate them as well, that also fell through, so we're looking to clean up our backyard for the purpose of housekeeping.
Okay.
But we will actually get about $8,000 to go back to the general fund.
Thank you.
And I digress just for one moment.
Sure.
Yesterday was Veterans Day, and we had a wonderful time honoring our veterans, and I was just amazed and astounded by one of our always-present, um, members of our city. He was called upon at the last minute to whistle the Star Spangled Banner, and John, he did an excellent job.
Thank you. Okay, that would be on the agenda, and I suggested a non-consent resolution.
Can I, can I just echo what, uh, Chief said?
Absolutely.
In reference to, 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 uh, Mr. John, when they could not, uh, when the PA system or the tape malfunction, I immediately started looking for John. You know, I, I thought he was gonna sing a song. I mean, anytime it was appropriate, that would have been appropriate. But he whistled, as Chief said, the Star Spangled Banner better than any musical instrument could have ever played.
Under Department of Public Works and Urban Development, I offer resolution authorizing approval for the amendment of resolution R 355-13 for approval to submit a grant application and to accept the grant, if we get it, and maintain the project, and maintenance of the projects. Execution of the grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the fiscal year NJDOT Trust Fund for the resurfacing of East Second Street. And East Second Street runs from Trail Road to, I think, Park Avenue, uh, Plainfield Avenue, and then it becomes... Is that correct? Well, in the event, it's from Trail Road to Plainfield Avenue. And this amendment is for the approval to submit the grant application, accept the grant. I don't think we have any problems with that. Okay, that was item S. So, that would be on, and would that be a non-consent or a consent resolution?
Consent.
Consent, great. Item T, resolution authorizing the award of a professional service contract pursuant to the Plainfield Municipal Code, two colon 10-18 competitive negotiation for the professional services, and two colon 10-19 paid-to-play to Remington Vernic Industries.
Yes.
For the Third Street Phase 1 roadway improvement project for an amount not to exceed $66,425. Any questions?
Yes.
Okay, and beyond, and I think we should vote on that. Resolution authorizing the release of performance guarantee and cash deposits associated with the development of the property at, uh, 12057 West Coast Street. Any questions or...
No.
It could be a consent?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution accepting the 2014 capital budget and the 2014-2019 capital improvement program as recommended by the planning board.
Yes.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
I hope, I think that there might be someone here that could answer that question.
I think I saw Mr. Neestat here.
Okay, so, I mean, this is the, uh, the smallest proposal for capital budget that I've ever seen, and, and I'm not objecting to it, you know, I'm sure we'll catch up. But there was, in, in the resolution from the planning board, it said that all previous proposals totaling $14 million should be taken up by the council for priority, for prioritizing? Could we just get, that, that's kind of unusual. I don't think I've ever seen that on a capital budget before, so give us an explanation.
Thank you, Council. What the planning board is recommending is that, uh, because the bonding for projects recommended by the planning board has not been undertaken in the past years, they are recommending actually a zero capital budget for 2014, except for the money to match grants for DOT, for roadwork, and they recommend to the council, look at the bonds, look at the, I'm sorry, look at the projects that have been recommended in the past that have not been bonded, and choose which projects you wish to proceed with during 2014.
Now, I, I don't think that you attached the list of those projects in our resolution.
We can certainly do so if you do not have...
Yes, I think the council should get that list.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that would be an amendment to the resolution?
No, it's not an amendment.
Just attached.
We can forward them tomorrow.
Thank you. So, that should be on the, uh, agenda?
Yes.
For voting, or should it be a consent at this point? I think it should be voted on, thank you. Because it's a capital budget, it's authorized me expenditure of a lot of money if the council go along with it, I think it should be voted. What do you think? Anybody else have any?
Consent.
Okay. Resolution authorizing approval to award a contract to King University Small Business Development Center in the amount of $30,000 for continued business consultation, counseling services. Should it go on the agenda?
No.
No.
Yes.
Okay, let's go down the list.
Yes.
Mr. Mapp? We're talking about item W.
Answer is no.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
No. We, this, this keeps coming back to us, and we keep saying, you know, it keeps getting voted down.
Okay, we're dealing with it tonight, yeah. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Okay, so the notes went, so this is not on the agenda. We got one, two, oh, and I'm a, yeah. Okay, so it's on the agenda, it's the voting.
I mean, that's a big one. I had discussed this, I've learned previously, and of course, the majority ruled. But again, I say that there's no legal basis for spending city dollars for this purpose, none whatsoever. So, we should be acting in a very ethical and appropriate manner as opposed to spending dollars like this. I detailed it two or three months ago.
Mr. Counsel, is this a legal...
It's only on the agenda.
Yeah, is this legal? It's going to King University for a program that I understand it's been running since, what, 2002?
It's not a city program.
It would require further, I'd have to research the matter further before I could give an opinion on it as to, if the council sees fit to, to table it for a legal opinion, I can certainly provide one, but if the council wants to move forward, that's their decision.
All right, let me see if this, we put it on the agenda, we vote on it, and it'd be subject to the council's review and approval.
That I would not recommend, though. I would not recommend a vote pending a legal opinion. They should get the legal opinion first, if you'd like that, and then I can, and then you can vote, but I wouldn't recommend voting before a legal opinion.
So, what should we do in this resolution? If we got four votes, we can vote on it as it stands?
I said we just not move it until we get a legal opinion.
I think I should explain, uh, Mr. Chairman, the basis for my making the statement that I made. The city does not have any contractual obligations with King University, and therefore, that alone is the basis upon which we should not proceed. We're adding this item to consideration.
Well, in the letter from King University, they say they've been doing this with the city in counseling businesses, small businesses, and giving them advice since 2002. So evidently, there was something there that the city spent the money on unless we were passing it through the back door.
The notion that we've been doing... The notion that we've been doing something wrong for ten years, we should continue to do it for eleven years just doesn't make sense. If someone...
It doesn't make sense, Mr. Matt.
Counselor Reed, one second. Is there anyone representing King University in the audience?
Can I do something?
Sure. Ms. Brown?
There was a person here from King University, um, a couple of months ago, and I was under the impression that this program provides opportunities for Plainfield residents to start small businesses, it provides career training and workshops that are beneficial to the residents of Plainfield.
That was my understanding as well, and my also understanding that it came from 2002 until now. And I would defer to a legal attorney's opinion as opposed to my colleague, Mr. Matt from the Third Ward for the moment, and the mayor. And this only authorizes a contract. If the legal counsel believes that is not legal, I'm sure he will come back to the council and say, "This wasn't legal, and we should not enter contracts."
Here's what I recommend to, what I'd recommend is that there would be no action to table right now, but what I would provide is a written legal opinion to the council as to the legality of the program, and then it can be voted on at the December meeting. And there'll be opportunity to review the opinion, to ask any questions of me, or any back and forth that we may need, and then you will be fully informed when you vote. And that's my recommendation to the council as to how to proceed, is to not place it on the agenda pending a legal review.
Okay. Ms. Reed, what do you think?
Uh, both of the councils.
Absolutely.
My only comment to the Corporation Council is that whether the program is legal or not is not an issue here. I am sure it's a legal program. What's an issue here is that is there a contractual obligation between the city of Plainfield and King University that places Plainfield on the hook to pay for the consideration in the city. If there's a contract between the two entities, then I would like you to weigh in for legal opinion on that, not whether it's a legal program or not. I'm sure it's legal.
I see, but this awards a contract, so there's apparently no contract at the moment. It says approval to award a contract to King University in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. So we don't have a contract, and the services they're given is, I understand it from that letter, is counseling small businesses and to, how to establish a business, I guess, and how to continue, and dealing with certain problems that small businesses run into.
So at the moment, we're waiting...
I would like to make a comment.
Wait, excuse me. At the moment, we're waiting for, we're going to wait for you to give us legal opinion so that we can pick our business on the December's agenda. Is that the consensus of the council?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I would like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Mrs. Williams.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
King University provides this service. They don't need our money to provide this service. We don't have a contract with King. Other, as I've mentioned a few times when this has come on the agenda before, these small business development centers at different universities on different campuses, they provide this service. There's no municipality in the state that pays money to a university for this service. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's not only agenda...
Rent, not for the service. This is purely for rent.
No, it isn't.
Right, it's actually to pay rent to...
Control there. So, Counselor Reed?
It's not only agenda, and we are...
I'm gonna take control.
And the opinion will not just be on the legality, but whether it's legal for the city to fund the program. I think that's how it works then.
Yeah.
It would be a good idea for King University to develop partnership with Plainfield. I mean, it's a state university. We act like it's a terrible thing.
Okay, so it's not only agenda, we await to December to consider it again. X, resolution authorizing an escrow refund in the amount of five hundred dollars to Marvin Lasquet's property as forty-two, forty-four Randolph Road. Any objection? They're placing that on the agenda, and is it a consent?
Yes.
Okay, consent. Resolution authorizing a lien placement for cleanup of fifty-five properties totaling thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-three cents as set forth on Schedule A. I assume there are no objections of...
No.
Okay. Next one. Z, resolution authorizing a lien placement for the cleanup of seventeen properties, which totals sixteen thousand, six fifty-one, fifty-eight, as per Schedule B.
Yes.
Okay, that's on the consent, both of them. Thank you. Z one, resolution authorizing lien placement for cleanup of eighteen properties totaling twenty-one thousand, four seventy-nine, eighty-seven on Schedule C. Any objection? They're placing it on, any objection? They're placing it on the consent?
No.
Okay, Z two, resolution authorizing, excuse me, lien placements for cleanup of four properties totaling fourteen hundred, ten dollars and ninety-six cents, Schedule B. Is that the same as the others?
Yes.
Thank you. On the agenda and consent, resolution authorizing lien placement for cleanup of twenty-seven properties totaling twenty-one thousand, seven forty-six, thirty, and that's on Schedule E. Any objection? They're placing it on the agenda?
No.
Okay, that takes care of the resolutions. I am going into introductions of ordinances on first reading. First one is MC 2013-10, an ordinance amending the schedule of salaries and wages as adopted pursuant to Article 14, Chapter 11 of the Municipal Code of City of Plainfield.
Yes.
Questions or comments? It's already on the agenda. Okay, is it a, yeah, I guess it has to be a voting, hasn't it? Uh, MC 2013-11, an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter Two, Administration of Article Three, Mayor to add Section Six, Chief of Staff to the Municipal Code of the City of Plainfield. I'm voting against that because I think this may be premature. I think it's going to add to our taxes. It's another person in the administration, and I think we are top-heavy on administration now. But do we put it on the agenda for voting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's on the agenda for voting. MC 2013-12, an ordinance amending the schedule of salaries and wages adopted pursuant to Article 14, Chapter 11 of the Municipal Code of the City of Plainfield for the Chief of Staff salary, which we just said was going on the agenda. If that passed, you got to pay him. Do I put that on?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to ignore that one. Okay, uh, MC 2013-13, an ordinance to amend various zoning regulations in Chapter Seventeen, land use in the city of Plainfield. And this is for off-track improvement, clothing receptacles, and outdoor storage, and porches, and signs. What's your desire on that, colleagues?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution, I mean, uh, ordinance, MC 2013-14, an ordinance to amend various zoning regulations in Chapter Seventeen, land use in the city of Plainfield, which include automatic teller machines, buffering and screening, mixed-use structures, non-conforming uses, shade trees, sidewalks, signs, and performance standards. And this was submitted by the Planning Board. Do I put it on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, but I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
And that's probably for Mr. Neustadt. There he is. This is about the automated teller machine. So there's, um, and I think in the interest of trying to keep things simple for businesses, we want to be more business-friendly than we are. I just want to make sure that we're not putting features into our ordinances that are going to be a burden. So with the automated teller machines, there's, this proposes that development permits have to be obtained for converting an existing drive-through lane to an ATM. Why do we need to do that?
What we learned through, first of all, a development permit is in-house, so it would simply be done through my office. I review it, make sure it conforms with zoning. What we learned through the last ATM conversion with Bank of America on East Front Street was that there's an actual, actually a separate, and I apologize if you get it from state statute or federal statute, but it's an actual statute in regard to lighting. The amount of lighting that they were proposing on that site, I would say was twenty times what we permit in our code. So based upon that, I realized right off the bat, we can't let this go through. That site in particular, since it's on the corner of Westerville, would have had twenty-five-foot-high, um, I believe it was LED lights shining over property lines onto residential properties. So for that reason alone, I wanted to make sure that we reviewed them in-house for zoning, and it wasn't just a building permit application. But it's very important to recognize that that development permit is not a planning board or zoning board application. It's in-house, you have ten days to review.
Okay. Thank you. That's fine.
Thank you. Twenty, MC 2013-15, an ordinance to rezone Block 202, Lots 1.01 and 1.02, which is seventeen oh one to eighteen twenty-one, West Front Street, one hundred to one fourteen, Rock Avenue, to light industrial zones in the city land use ordinance, Chapter Seventeen, and the city zoning map as recommended in the 2009 city master plan.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's on the agenda?
Consent.
No, this has to be voted on. MC 2013-16, an ordinance to correct an omission, which we all do, of Block 625, Lot 22, which is fourteen hundred South Avenue, from the land use ordinance, Chapter Seventeen, and the city zoning map created through the adoption of MC 2013-01, establishing the RA zone. That's crazy. Mr. Neustadt, what are we doing here?
My wife will not believe this, but I'll say in public, right, I made a mistake. Okay, I was wrong. Write that down, Senator. What I did was I failed to include one property in the RA zone. Basically, the properties in the RA zone go from a freshwater's restaurant to Catherine Vabachi, and I missed the most, westernmost piece. It's a flag-shaped lot. Some of us know it as the morning company, the, uh, loggers, loggers. I failed to include that, so I, the omission on my part, and the issue is to just put it back in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just one more question?
Yes.
First of all, I should disclose that I am a property owner adjacent to that lot. Did you send out a notice to the property? Did you, are you required to send a notice to property owners?
No, it was recommended in the master plan, because, and because it's a recommendation in the master plan, you don't need to send out notices to property owners.
It would have been nice. It would have been.
Thank you. It's on the agenda, and, uh, last one, MC 2013-17, an ordinance to amend, Chapter 11 Personnel Creating, Article 20, Employment Recovery and Local Resident Hiring and Construction Projects. Yes, sir.
I do have lots of concerns about this particular part of this that's being proposed, and I would like to ask the Corporation Council to give us an overview of what's being proposed and what he sees as the impact of such an ordinance on the need for, the need for us to be conscious of constitutional rights as well as our desire to, to, to look at how cost can be impacted. There are lots of things that if this is allowed to go through and proposed, often negative impacts, and so I would like to hear from you what you would all tell.
Certainly. Uh, the, the issue of hiring, local hiring quotas has been tested in court cases, uh, all the way up to the U.S. Supreme Court. Um, and what the Supreme Court has said is that when do, when instituting a local hiring quota, uh, it falls under analysis of the Privileges and Immunities Clause of the Constitution, which basically says if you're going to discriminate, for lack of a better word, against out-of-state or out-of-city residents, you have to have a substantial reason for doing so. And, and this, the, the one notable case came out of Camden, where Camden wanted to institute a policy very similar to what's offered here today. And what the court said is that it's not enough to merely say that this, that, that out-of-state or out-of-city people are coming in and taking jobs for local residents. You need a substantial reason, economic data. You need to have possibly expert reports, because if you don't have that, that homework, that evidence to support the, um, the decision to have a local hiring quota, in essence, you, you, you won't pass constitutional muster, and the ordinance will fail. Um, so there, there's no doubt that these type of ordinances, they get challenged by, by trade groups, by, uh, various, you know, entities who have an interest in seeing, you know, interest in doing business with municipalities. We need to be sure that we have that backup data to support something such as this, and that's what I caution the council when reviewing something like this. You have to, you have to be sure that you have the evidence to defend the position of the hiring quota. Some towns have gone the other direction to look to some sort of merchant preference, uh, doing, doing a carrot as opposed to a stick, as opposed to a direct quota. So those are ways some towns have looked at this issue. In either case, though, a lot of study is required to defend such a quota in, against potential lawsuits that could come.
I'm a little concerned, given what you've just said, that this is on the agenda. Don't you not only review these ordinances before they are presented to the council?
Well, in, in most cases, I do, and in this one, though, I, I was unable to give an opinion in advance of it being brought before the council, but I'm happy to do so. And as you know, I provided an opinion to the council, uh, on this issue in advance of the meeting. I hope everyone had a chance to read that, but I still, I believe that the quotas in themselves are not unconstitutional. They just need the backup to withstand the constitutional scrutiny, and that's my concern with this one.
So in essence, though, I want to hear from you. You didn't have an opportunity to review this, our...
No, no, I did not in advance. I didn't get it to the council. I did not.
Is it on the agenda or not?
Yes.
I, I don't think that we should put it on the agenda because it hasn't been reviewed, and I think that what the Corporation Council seems to be suggesting is that it too needs research and data to back it up before we put ourselves into a quandary where, you know, we may be facing some sort of lawsuit. So I, I would say that, um, that I don't think it should go on.
No, and I'll say that it hasn't, I have now reviewed, I'll be clear in that, I have reviewed, and my, my concern is the, as, as to your second point, Counselor Williams, is the issue of the backup, the support, and can that be achieved? Yes, but I don't know if we are there as of this moment. And that's my suggestion, that we get that backup material before the council report, to ensure that we are, you know, protected in the event of litigation.
And I would add one more thing. I'm a little concerned about how this, the potential for this to impact cost as well as to push away prospective factor, who the city wants to get the best for the lowest price, most respectable. lowest price, most responsible, bidders that are going to be put out, bids on, you know, requests for it. So I've been very concerned about the impact that this could have on the city, if it allows this to go through.
So Mr. Michelle, could you just be...
Give us a recommendation.
Be very specific about what you are recommending we do, aside from your legal opinion.
Absolutely not, I'll be very clear. I would recommend, as I stated, tableing this, so that we can provide the necessary data before moving forward, because as it is presently constructed, these rarely cast judicial scrutiny. And only if we can get that evidence together, if we can show that through economic data, through expert reports, only then could this be introduced, what I recommend is to introduce it to the council. So as it's presently constructed, I would recommend it, or no action be taken this evening, that more review be done. That's my recommendation, as it stands.
Excuse me. I believe that whenever we are going to be spending our tax dollars with any contractors that's coming into our city, I believe that we have a right to have our people be hired, or at least a certain amount of our people. I don't think it's fair that I should be paying out my money to somebody and then telling them, then telling me that they're going to hire whomever they want to bring into my... I think that's crazy. Absolutely crazy.
Here's what the Supreme Court, what the Supreme Court would say back to you, though, is that we have to prove it, and that's the issue that...
There is proof. We have young men and women here in this city that have, they might not have all the education in the world, but they do have, you can teach people. You want to tell me to move a stone from here to there? You don't have to go to college to do that. And you want to tell me that some inside, they're going to bring in some contractor who's going to go there and say, "But I have my union people and I must bring them," and they're going to pay them gazillion dollars, and they're going to turn around and pay my low-income people much, much less and get the work done, and I must pay them all my hard tax-free dollars? That's outrageous, to say the least.
What's being suggested is that we have the data and...
We have data. We have had data for years.
You have it in your package.
Give me a break. I'm sorry.
I just want to say, I mean, I think what we're arguing about is how to proceed. I don't think anybody's arguing about the goal of getting more employment for our residents. There are other ways of doing it, and so I'm not saying we shouldn't consider this, but in other towns, a way to do it that is not going to be challenged legally is to provide financial incentives.
That's why we need an ordinance.
So we have to, like, think about this very carefully, but a financial incentive, and somebody just said before, using a carrot instead of a stick, has been proven to be effective, and it's not going to, it'll withstand legal challenges. So I think this needs thought. We have to do it in a way that's actually going to work.
We have been sitting here thinking forever, why our people are suffering. Give me a break. This is crazy, and you know it, and everybody else knows it.
Let me say this. My opinion is the most complaints that I get in this city, other than the roads, and I think we've taken steps to avoid those, is that there are no jobs for us. We cannot bid for anything. I explained that the bidding process is very arduous, it's labor-intensive, you have to have a bid bond, and you have to have a payment-in-for-profits bond, and I dare say that none of us of color would be sitting here now if some laws had not been changed to allow us to participate in the system. And if this is one way we can get further participation and improve other cities, I'm for it, okay? So it is a first reading ordinance. If it's passed at the voting meeting, we have until the next meeting for the final reading. After that, I think it's 20 days before it's put into effect, and the heck with it, lawsuits happen every day for anything. I will accept the lawsuits on the city, and I think we have a pretty good attorney to defend it.
Can I make a comment?
So it should be on the agenda and for voting.
Can I make a comment? I think it should not be on the agenda because...
Who's that?
Councilwoman Williams.
Okay, go ahead.
So my comment is, as was stated previously, no one has a problem with, you know, us trying to employ as many residents as possible. I think that's a good thing. I think that all that Corporation Council is saying is, in effect, let's get all our ducks in a row, because I think it's irresponsible to say, "Bring the lawsuits on." We're talking about your tax dollars, the tax dollars of everybody sitting in this room. So I think that, you know, out of, you know, the expertise that we are receiving, the legal opinion that our Corporation Council is giving us, is to give him time to gather the data so that we can have this ordinance come back before us.
And I say we will have time when we adopt this resolution and it's...
Councilmember B, could you help us both to see if we have the...
Yes.
...move it to the agenda?
Okay.
Let it go on the agenda.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
No.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Brown, yes.
No.
Okay, that's three no's. I have a yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's on the agenda. Thank you. Madam President, that happened to be the end of my round tonight, so you have it back. It started with citizen participation.
Citizen participation. Citizens are welcome to address the council on any governmental item of concern to them, whether or not it is scheduled on the above agenda. During this portion of the agenda, a total of 60 minutes have been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name and address to the clerk for the record. The amount of discussion on any subject, as well as the amount of time on any single speaker is allowed, will be limited to five minutes. Large groups are urged to select someone to represent them. Representative Paul.
Johnny Pritchard, 723 Arlington Avenue, Plainfield, Jersey. Several things I'd like to bring to your attention. First, I'd like to congratulate you for thanking me for coming to the rescue at yesterday's Veterans Day services. At least I was glad I came to give the rescue when it was needed more. Secondly, we have men and women in military uniform who are serving us daily, day in and day out, some of them who are from Plainfield, they are our sons and daughters. We must not forget that, we must support them in their efforts to defend our freedom. Let's not follow that anti-GI track we went into during Vietnam, when all of our citizens, unfortunately, called our soldiers sailors, marines, coast guards, mid-airmen, Nazis, murderers, and baby killers. I think that word Nazi ought to be retired. That's the other N word, like that, see, retire. And among those who died in Vietnam, with your permission, ladies and gentlemen, let this sing. They loved us all. Every day in a hundred ways, they told us so. In honesty, in affection, they told us so. They loved us all. Every day in a hundred ways, they showed us so. With loyalty and bravery, they showed us so. They were defenders, and they kept us free. They took it all to guard us and fought for liberty. They loved us all. And we should know. For we all were free. Last but not least, we need to react to Ed Miliband, better if it stands for what's about that. My position on it has not changed one iota since this thing started four or five years ago. We need a hospital, not some apartment complex on that site. We need a hospital, and we need a BABE, and we need a ASAP. We must have a hospital that is capable of admission, just like we have a police department or fire department is capable of admission, EMSs and rescue squads capable of admission. We need a hospital, we need a BABE. We are 30 miles from ground zero. What if another terrorist attack occurs on the scale of 9/11? That's when we'll beat Miliband very badly. And we must make so that JFK, like, square eggs. We're not talking about hip clays or earaches, we're talking about many people's lives. Get up on Miliband, go. No, 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 I'm not going to do that. The sooner I get Ed Miliband, the better off we all will be. Don't make myself fear.
Good evening.
Ager's Lamar Caffcart Jr., known as Lenny. Madam President, how you doing?
How you doing?
Mr. Matt, congratulations. Sir Eric Briggs, thank you for your eight years for our city. Thank you very much.
My pleasure, good evening.
Of course, when you see me, you know I'm here for one thing, that's recreation. All right, I understand there is a budget crisis going on, and I've been here, I've heard a lot of rumors, so I figure I come in front of the council. Let's get it straight. Now, I've been dealing with recreation program basketball over 28 years, and a part of it for like 32 years, we're playing it all. This is the first time I ever understood, or was told, that we cannot go into a gym on Saturday morning because of budgets. We cannot go into the gyms on Saturday. There's an issue with the school, paying the school for our Saturday mornings, so we're not allowed to go in yet. We started today, but we don't know where we stand at right now, so we don't have a gym for Saturday. Now, this morning, well, I shouldn't say this morning, let's start off with yesterday. Looking at ESPN, Yale is playing, Justice Sears is playing. Today, at 11 o'clock, UMass, Derek Gordon is playing, all on ESPN. At 3 o'clock, Tyrone Johnson's Southern Carolina. Right now, Xavier, Miles Davis, what all these young men have in common? They all came through your and our program, all of them. These are just four or five names that's been on TV in the last 24 hours, that came through our program, not mine, not theirs, our program. But we're retold now that we have to slow down, and you know, mm, I can't do that. I don't want to bring a lot of kids and a lot of parents up in front of you guys, you know we can do that. I figure I just come to talk to y'all, man to woman, woman to man, whatever, we can get this straight. I spoke with the superintendent. She said there's no way that the schools should be shut down on a Saturday morning for us. Shouldn't be no budget issues when it comes to that. She needs someone, I guess we need someone to talk to, from the city park to the school park, to come together where we can get the Saturday morning back. All right, you know, we consider our program one of the tops. It's been stating a good program in the paper. Bob Hareley, who's Hall of Fame coach, talked about our program last year. He said our program is one of the best in New Jersey, better than most colleges in Catholic, I shouldn't say, Catholic schools. We produce kids, we keep these kids off our streets, we host 350 kids to 400 a year. That's the most of any program in the city of Plainfield. We try to do what we can with what we got. We don't ask for much, that's all we ask for, a gym, balls, and whistles. I don't ask for nothing else. I don't ask for no money for no banquet, I don't ask for money for kids, whatever we're going to get, we take care of that, we fundraise. That's all I ask y'all to do, is just allow us into the gym. So please, can you look into that? I know, like I said, superintendent said she's willing to talk to whoever to get this done. And last, we need someone in recreation down there. I understand on the 19th, the young lady that's in there now, it's her last day. Like I said, I'm not going by rumors, it's just one here. Now, on the 19th of this month, we only have one official staff in there, not seasonal people, just one official staff person, and I understand that she's leaving on the 19th, laid off or whatever. We need, she's really announced, if I can just say her name, I don't know if I can say her name or not, but that young lady is there, we need her to stay, because she's the only one there with the experience right now. You know, she's the only one there. So we, you know, I don't know if this, look at y'all making hands for the first time or not, I'm not for sure, but we really, really need to look at this. I know y'all got other things to do, a lot of things, but we also must put recreation up there, too, because if our kids ain't in them gyms, trust me, I got 400 kids that go to the streets, and they'd be your problem some other way. Let me have, let me be my problem right now. That's all I ask of y'all. Thank you for taking this time, appreciate it, have a good day.
Wait, you cannot comment on the fact that we're taking gym away from children? That's one of the state-of-the-art programs, that basketball program. We have many children that have went through that program. I have a problem with that, especially the council, I'm myself not knowing about this, any other council members, that we're shutting down a program. They practice on Saturdays. We're shutting down a program?
Council President.
Wait, I'm, excuse me, Mr. Matt, Councilman Matt, I'm talking right now. We're shutting down a program? I have a problem with that. I have a problem with it.
Council President, I can't provide information for you on the program, but if we're talking about specific personnel, we're not at liberty to discuss specific personnel.
I'm asking about a program. Are we shutting down a basketball program?
I don't have any information on it.
You don't have any information on it?
No, I don't.
Quite a personal question, please.
Yes.
I will not be able to give you all of what you're looking for right now, because it is a matter of personnel. I'll have to speak to you in a general sense, and that is, when this council or members, some members of this council voted to remove some funds from a specific grant, it put us into a sudden layoff plan, and in the layoff plan, some folks had bumping rights, and that's why we're in the situation that we're in.
But because of the bumping rights, we're shutting down a program for our children? That's ridiculous. Mr. Caffcart, we can't have any back and forth, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
We can't have any back and forth. I would love, we have another meeting scheduled, that you can come back to the mic, because we can't have any back and forth. But you can stay for the next meeting, so you can come back and view your comments.
Is that nice?
Yes, yes.
All right. But if the recreation can't make out the best approval, there'll be enough funds available as I walk away.
No, Mr. Caffcart?
I think someone from the administration needs to explain why we can't use the schools. That has nothing to do with personnel.
Absolutely.
So that's the point they want to make. Why is it that we can't use one of our public schools for the benefit of our kids? That's the answer that I would like to hear from you.
Okay.
Wait, one second. Can we get a response or no?
Council President, as your attorney, I don't have any information on the recreation program. I can certainly speak with individuals.
Is there someone we can get on the speakerphone and reference with the answers?
I don't believe so.
Madam President, if I may make a suggestion, I think that if it worked out, I will commit myself to working with the administration and the administration to resolve the problem, and I think it's very important that we do. And I'd like to know the amount of money involved, and we can come up with an answer.
I think I see somebody from administration back there from recreation since, Cynthia, can you come to the mic, please? Cynthia, have any information on the reason then why we're not being able to have our youth to play basketball on a Saturday, why we're shutting down this program?
Well, last year, in previous years, these schools didn't charge us as much as they charge now for us to use their facilities. For instance, they charged us $7,000 for our summer program, so they have used up the facility usage fees. And unless we get additional dollars put there, we can't... And unless we get additional dollars put there, we can't do anything else with the facilities. They charged that in the past.
How much do you need, how much do you need in this project to finish out the year?
I, I don't, I don't agree with that, and I feel like, and I'm very disappointed in the administration, because I felt, I feel like if this was an issue, that it should have come before council, and, and you find money for everything else, you can find money for our children.
But in their defense, they don't know what those, um, because I've been trying to get the information to them, to try to speak to them, to get Gary Ottman and the superintendent to sit down and talk to them about reducing the fees for the remainder of this year, so that we can get through this budget, and then look at it and speak to them with the next administration, to see if they're gonna reduce them, or we have to add more money in the budget to be able to cover that cost.
With all due respect, Cynthia, we have no time for the next administration, we have a basketball program that starts now.
It'll be approximately three thousand dollars for the five Saturdays.
Approximately what?
Approximately three thousand for five Saturdays.
That money was in the recreation budget.
It is.
Not, not, not for some to usage fees.
How much money, how much money was taken from the recreation program, the fund that event that occurred on August the 14th?
I haven't had a chance to look at that, so I couldn't really answer that.
Because there are two items in the budget, salary wage and other expenses. Other expenses could be used to pay anything other than salary wage. So the funding was there.
I haven't had a chance to look at it.
No, we know. The funding was there, and it was misused. That's a fact.
How much did you say you would need to finish out the basketball season in this budget?
The facility usage fees, we called them, they said for the five Saturdays, approximately three thousand. Like, the summer was seven thousand. So, you know, they had increased their fees.
So we need three thousand dollars?
In the past, they did charge those fees.
Find the monies, find the money for these children.
But now, they want us to pay for every maintenance person, every security person, every person that's there at the school during those hours, we have to pay for.
Alright, we have, we have an item on the agenda this evening, we can fund seven thousand dollars.
Absolutely.
If that is needed. But the money was there and misappropriated, but we can find it to pay back. I don't need to speak, thank you very much.
Good evening, Ellen Goldstein, nine thirty on Allen Madison Avenue. I should probably let the people who want to talk about the basketball program get ahead of the year soon, I'm gonna jump the ramp. I think you did the right thing. You did the right thing, the Small Business Development Center, I wanna thank you for that. These are fed, this is federally funded stuff, counseling is not going away, it's available. These programs happen throughout the country, if you look at some of the seminars and that stuff goes on, you see public libraries, county universities, and things like that. There's no reason that we can't be a little bit creative and open up space, the senior center has space, and I think that, that's, that's a good thing. As far as that femogram that went to the PMU, I understand what Mr. Mcello said about that. There is a clause in the interlocal agreement that relates to grants, things of that nature being transferred from the city over to the PMU. So I don't think that that is a particular issue, I mean, there's plenty of others.
It's being done improperly.
I'm sorry?
It's being done improperly.
It may in fact, there are a lot of things related to that interlocal agreement that being done improperly. So that should be something to be reviewed. In answer to Mr. Counselor Storch's questions concerning some of those grants that had been, with the balances canceled, I think the number, I don't have it in front of me, was a little over five hundred thousand dollars. There are two sixty-eight thousand dollar items in there, a total of about a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars that tie directly to the community services block grant that the city was juggling around. And I wouldn't accept any explanation, other than the fact that the city sat on this stuff for well over a year, they knew how much they were getting, they brought it out to the city council when it was only a couple of months left before all the money had to be expended. So, whatever Mr. Esteno has to say, he was the point man on this project, and they were juggling it too fast and didn't expect that the proverbial acid would hit the fan, when it did. It was a waste, no, it's a waste. As far as the local higher ordinance goes, it's filled with holes, and I really would appreciate that we do something right, that is airtight. You're including not only a residency issue in there, but you're talking about minorities generally, you're talking about women in here, you're talking about things that will not only open it up to privileges and immunity issue that Mr. Mcello talks about, but the equal protection issue. I mean, it is, and you're not even dealing, you're talking about residents in general who have skills, you're not talking about unemployed residents that have skills. So, it's gotta pass legal scrutiny. The intent is right, but before we go ahead, and I don't think in the middle of the winter this is gonna be much of an issue, we should take the time to study it, study all the issues. You can just read from the wording in here, but that it was kinda cobbled together without much, and it's really, it's heartwarming to see the council do the right thing, and it's very disappointing when the council pulls ahead and you just, and you just get a feeling that you don't know what, what you're doing, or what you're voting for. And that happens entirely too much. I think that the, I was a little bit hesitant about this ordinance dealing with chief of staff, cause I think as a town of fifty thousand people, with the government down the size, you know, between the city administrator and department heads, we should have enough to get everything done. But I think that if the chief of staff or somebody could be looking at some of this stuff, so that it doesn't take up the time of the council, and that the city ends up doing the right thing by the people, I think will be an advantage, you know, in the long run. So I'm gonna thank you very much, and I think I covered most of what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. The thing that I wanna discuss in reference to the presentation that PSENG put on, in reference to the energy storm, as a strong recommendation, I think that the city of Plainfield should really consider it. As of the storm we had last year, Sandy, the state has been looking at initiatives in reference to providing generators and other type of functions for municipalities, and I think that we should take advantage of it. Before us to be able to build the city to the future, we need to invest in our infrastructure, like the gentleman said, with power lines being above ground, planning to blow the ground. We just have been able to take advantage of the St. New Jersey grant, and that initiative's gonna tie strongly into the project that PSENG is putting forth. So we definitely look to, to invest in our future, working a partnership with PSENG, but also allow them to build the network and infrastructure here in Plainfield that's best gonna fit our municipality, our schools, our municipal government. And the second thing I wanted to raise up, in reference to the storm, there is a lieutenant that got promoted, and I wanna share some information about Troy Edwards. Troy Edwards is my deputy coordinator during the storm, who worked in the dispatch center. He was his ship, he was out in the middle of the storm. With his help, we were able to have shelters open, we got gas stations powered, people able to get to your destination. Troy Snit is an excellent sergeant, Edwards is an excellent sergeant, he's gonna make a great lieutenant. And one of the things that being a good lieutenant is about, is during times of emergency, we have individuals who will step up and go beyond their normal work. There's some folks that didn't wanna come to work at all, chose to stay home. This gentleman came out, gave us all one hundred percent for the city of Plainfield, and accepted on an additional responsibility as the deputy coordinator. I just wanna share one thing about this one lieutenant, because all lieutenants are justifiable. You work hard, you give it to your city, and hope one day that you're able to be promoted. And I hope you consider the person, when you think about the transfer of the budget to the police department. And the next thing, in reference to the PMUA. When we have a storm, we expend funds to address that storm, whether preventative agents or facilities could be removed. We have vendors that we contract that with. The PMUA was a vendor for helping us clear the streets, and also to clear the debris. It was not necessarily a grant, but a reimbursement for dollars that we spent. But it's important that we pay our vendors back the dollars that were appropriated. The FEMA has sent us checks for reimbursement, and from that, we're to pay our vendors. In this incident, the PMUA was a vendor, it provided the service, and we're now here to reimburse them. Thank you.
Would you add anything else?
Speaking of about jobs, there's a lot of black Americans that don't have a job in this town. I grew up in this town. And I'm just, I say, hey, Plainfield, I buy a lawn shot. I, as long as I've been a patriot, I have never seen this little people, you know, dealing with the fever. You know? A lot of people that I come across, afraid of the dick, they wanna, funny expression, they wanna be fucking with the dog. They speak to them, they gonna be there, that's your low class. I wanna classify people being low class. You all human, you all gonna look after everybody. The rich was looking out for the poor, it was the poor looking out for the rich. And that's the way the white work. The reality is, they not say it all. They says life may be fair, there's no reason to get fired. I think it's wrong. Somebody see, see the, find money they're petrod, and my dude, he said, why you don't smell, connect you him? So stop taking advantage of somebody else cause you have money. The money is not, the rule of law, if you in love with money, you right. Because money will be the main thing you strive for, more than having anyone else. You fear evil, all you want is, I can give my life for money. It ain't gonna last, you ain't gonna stick with that money. You know? I'm hurt that Plainfield don't support as much as it should. I see people working, and people playing for nothing in this town. We have a company award on Seventh Street, that did sidewalk stuff. I saw the sidewalk they doing by City Hall, where was somebody else working at? You know? And I say, I'm a black American, man, they brought my ancestors to this country. Where am I from, I'm not running back there, what part, yep? How am I working, now I don't see where, I'm getting the help from my town. Y'all say go to K College, how many of you got the money to go there? You get there, or should I go by ticket or money to be drunk at there? You know? I love Plainfield, I'm always gonna love it, I'm always gonna repeat it, you know what I mean? And I'm not gonna let nobody take you out. I appreciate the way the government of Plainfield, screw Plainfield.
Here I am again, Sandra Taylor Williams, with more talk about the city. Do you have the address, please? Yes, my address, Sandra Taylor Williams, three twelve New Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. Lifelong member of, of the city. I understand that we, the people of Plainfield, have power, power I didn't know about. I obtained a city charter. And it says, the voters of the city may propose any ordinance and may adopt or reject the same at the poll. Such power being known as the initiative. Any initiated ordinance, I'm sorry, ordinance may be submitted to the council by petition signed by twenty percent of the registered voters of the city. So if there's a job in Plainfield that is, anybody might have, if they're not doing the job properly, if we get twenty percent of the voters, of the voters' signatures, we can get rid of the position or the person. There's somebody that everybody in Plainfield know who's not doing their job, and that person is Sharon Brett, of the senior center. This woman has done so many things to the people at the senior center, it's ridiculous. I've been complaining to you guys for over two years about it. This woman does what she wants at that center. You don't make people wear badges around their necks like they're dogs. You're supposed to put up the budget at least once a month for everybody to see it, where our money is going. There's a thirty thousand dollar grant she got, and a forty thousand dollar grant she got, and has not accounted for the money. We wanna know where it's at. This woman has bullied the election of the members. She had no business being in the room when we had the members' election. She bullied the box, she kept the box, she told people what to do, what not to do. She does what she wants, and no one does anything about it. In the conference room, she gives her employees parties, but no one else can go in there and eat a heart. Something needs to be done about this woman, and you guys aren't doing anything about it. There's been people like the mayor's husband that has cursed me out in the back of this room, nothing was done about that, that was pushed under the road. The Ricky Williams, when he cursed me out about the mayor, that was pushed under the road. Something needs to be done. And if I have to stand on the street with petitions to sign to get rid of this one, that one, or another, or different ordinance, I will do it, cause it's ridiculous. I'm so glad that you won the election, Mr. Matt, you deserve it, you also bridged it. Couple of y'all up there don't need beating, have a blessed day. Excuse me, David.
Hi, April 11, nine thirty-five, Madison Avenue, Plainfield. I just wanted to talk to item N on the agenda, the resolution authorizing refund of overpaid taxes. The property in question that I have that was on that list was eight oh eight eight fourteen Central Avenue, which most of you know is the Abbott Manor. The Abbott Manor hasn't functioned as a nursing home for over ten years. The existing owner, whose name I won't mention, has owned the property for over two years, and has not submitted any redevelopment plans, any rehabilitation plans, or any other kind of plans, any board, to any issue. My question, and I agree with, I mean, this is all legal what he's doing, however, my question is, he said he will have his taxes increased once he rehabs the property. My question to council is, how long is that rehabilitation process going to take effect? Because we are all having to pay additional taxes for him having that property reduced. Is there anything or any schedule that you could propose that would have some kind of recourse, where you'd have to come to any one of the boards in the city for rehabilitation plans? The roof is leaking, the porches are collapsing, I'm surprised there's no code enforcement, code enforcement or maintenance, code violations on this property now. I don't know who this gentleman knows, I'm not accusing him of knowing anyone, but there weren't political signs on his property. And I thought that you had to have permission to have these signs put on your property. So I would just like to know how long this gentleman is going to take to rehab this property? Cause it's becoming a real eyesore. Thank you.
Council President, I can speak to that. Certainly, I think you, the resident hit on the, on the major issue is code enforcement. That's something that we can work on right away. If there are code violations, we'll see to it that something's be issued. In the meantime, I will try to get more information. In the meantime, I will try to get more information about the status of the rehabilitation, and if I can provide additional information to the council, we'll do that as soon as possible.
Can we get a report of the current code violation statuses?
As well as the rehabilitation, we'll get both.
But, I mean, we can't force someone to redevelop their property, but if they let it deteriorate, we do have an abandoned properties ordinance, which we've never used. So this may be, we should, we should think about it.
Absolutely, there's several avenues available to us, we'll explore all of them.
Good evening, Jeffrey Dunn, 537 Albemarle Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. President of the Chamber of Commerce, Director of the Incubator, the only business incubator in Union County, tied into New Jersey Ben. Fifteen incubators throughout the state, a network of incubators that can use, use, and enable, empower the city. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to say to you right now, this program we're talking about in reference to empowering small business, I am totally supportive of. And yes, there needs to be some study. But there's no denying the fact that we are having some economic challenges in Plainfield. There's no denying the fact that there's unemployment issues in Plainfield. There's no denying the fact that many of these contractors come into our town and do not hire any or very little of the people in the city of Plainfield. There's no denying those facts. There's also no denying the fact that the tunnel project, which was killed by the government, basically has a chance of coming back. But let's forget about that, let's put that to the side. There's a one-seat ride coming up, and that's going to empower this entire track, Red and Valley, the whole line. And if you question what I said, all you gotta do is look at all the towns that surround us, and look at all the development around their train stations. Look what's happening there. So let me say this to everybody very clearly. The developers are coming. The developers are going to do a lot of development. And sooner or later, they're coming to Plainfield. My question is, what are we going to do to make sure that Plainfield gets its chair? Now, the question comes up, well, we don't want to waste our tax dollars, and we don't want to basically concern and reference the legal thing, I understand that. But I believe that we have enough to back, we have enough facts to back it. The more I probably want to say to you, I'm more concerned about the situation in reference to how we're going to keep the money that we're spending with our developers to stay and keep them in Plainfield, keep the dollars in Plainfield. The money that's being spent out of Plainfield is staying out of Plainfield, not coming back. As the Chamber President, I'm concerned about small business. Bottom line is, again, we have the need to empower our small business, and we need to persuade, encourage. Mr. Stewart, you have a good point. Okay, let's use that, but sometimes we need to use a stick too, because they don't always go when they encouraged. We have to, how can I say, persuade even harder, tougher. And Ms. Vera Graves, I want to say, I applaud you, you're absolutely right. We need to be supportive. I'm concerned, I'm concerned that we're not talking enough about small business, we're not talking enough about unemployment, we're not talking about the economic challenge that's in our face. But let me say this to everybody. What happened to Harlem, and this justification, what happened to Brooklyn, and this justification, and what happened to New Brunswick, and this justification, what's happened to Newark, and this justification, is getting ready to happen in Plainfield. And there's going to be a lot of money spent, millions. My question is, how much of that is going to be in Plainfield? I'm going to say something pointedly. Congratulations, Mr. Matt. I want to say to you, I offer my expertise. My expertise as our president of the chamber, I'm well-connected with the chamber, and all of this community, this town, and other towns. Also, I'm a part of the incubator tied into a number of other incubators throughout the state, tied into Rutgers University, NJIT, all those resources are available. But, you know, I ask you, I'm tapping you to bring you, I can give you what I got. But I ask, let me be of help. We have to work together, ladies and gentlemen. We have to work together to make this thing happen. We have a great opportunity to do great things. But I'm trying to say to you right now, if we don't make a point to cut a piece out for the city of Plainfield's businesses, we will be left out. And as President of the Chamber of Commerce, I stand to support whatever we can do for small business, for this community, so that we can keep the money in Plainfield, in Plainfield, and have it turn around rather than go out. We don't need coffee bags in Plainfield.
Now, we're good, 32nd Street, Cookin Road. I too want to speak about ordinance 2013-17. I agree with that there is a problem here which has to be addressed. I am very disturbed that we are using a motion to persuade our voting in that matter instead of listening to the opinion of the Corporation Council. This is the man we pay for giving us legal advice and to cut down any other potential legal course of suit. It's not damn the suits, let's go ahead. It's let's listen to the man who we are paying to give us the advice and do nothing else but do that, thank you.
My concern is also with the promotion, I am in the mic. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hoorah. My concern is also with the funds for the promotion of the officers that are being promoted. It is important, yes, granted, to get promotion, but it also feels good to get that extra little something to take care of your family. I can speak on that, because as a 31, recent retired, 31-year veteran of the United States Army, it is important to see something else other than another stripe come on your shoulder. It's good to have something else in your pocket, because it helps a whole lot, and not just boost up your morale and the other soldiers that, or officers that will see it, it's something that will keep them going. I'm not saying that just because they didn't get it or they don't get it, they're going to stop doing their best, I can't speak for everyone, but I'm quite sure, because they have been doing their best, and they go beyond their duties. They will do it. But I'm praying that there will be a budget for them so that they can have something for, you know, to help themselves and keep them motivated, and keep their morale up, and give the others that are coming up that rank an incentive, not just to get the money, but to also get that promotion and work hard. You have to work hard for what you get, amen. You have to. But to put somebody in position, to tell someone, yes, I'm promoting you, yes, you're getting this extra rank, but I can't give you anything for it, it's kind of like a slap on the other cheek. So that's just my concern, thank you for listening, thank you.
My name's John Jackson, 909 Seventh Street, Plainfield. This is my fourth meeting. So my first meeting today this morning was at the Senior Center. There's a serious parking problem there. Seniors are being towed away, they have to cross a dangerous street, they have to go through one doors. There should be more doors open, especially in front of the building. The guys that are raking their leaves and leaving them on the street are taking parking spaces. There should be some priority to getting them to move their leaves so that they can park in front of the building. I think it's dangerous to park in front of the building because we got to cross that street there. And in other towns, especially in Disneyland, they make their, a point to let people know through the center of town, there are seniors there, they have flashing lights and all that stuff. So basically say, you know, take care of our seniors. I say the same thing in Plainfield, it should be dangerous. And there were two seniors that have fallen fell trying to get in that building, their cars are being towed away, and we should have priority parking there. During the discussion concerning parking, it was never discussed among the seniors, but among the governing body of the city, but never the seniors. And we should do something about the parking. My second meeting today concerned action services. We have a board there, and there's not enough members showing up. So you guys can appoint some members to show up. We have six coming today, we need at least eight for court. And I don't know the problem, but you should try to get some people that you think would make good board members, so that we can have a court, so we can do some business there. And this is the fourth, this is the fourth meeting, the other meeting was something different. I wanted you to know about that, the parking situation at the center. And I want you guys to discuss it. I was chosen to be part of the parking spokesman for the center. My brother's car was towed away, cost him $185. Communication is hard down there. If something, someone has something to announce, we should be able to hear it. He just bought his car, and he stopped walking. So he, you know, he came in, and next thing he knows, his car's going to cost him $185. That's ridiculous. You guys, let's do something about that parking there.
Thank you.
How do we, 60, I represent Plainfield? I stand tonight to voice my concern about the issues that we seem to be having with the promotions of our officers in Plainfield. And this is a great concern to me, because I value the police officers that we have in this city. As a matter of fact, with all the changes that we've had in administration and all the different faces that I've seen, it's encouraging and it's good to know that some of the same officers that were policing our streets when I was a young person are still there helping us feel safe now that my children are going to be. And so I feel that it is our responsibility as citizens to be able to do what we need to do to appropriate the funds to instate the promotion. They deserve an opportunity to grow in their craft, to grow in their careers, to grow in their commitment. And we, as the residents, need to support that, to celebrate it when they're honored. And we need to do whatever it takes to make sure that these promotions do stand. Thank you.
I don't know, I don't know if it's on or not, it's very long. Okay, 414 Randolph Field in Plainfield. You know, in terms of the discussion of the contracts and racial preference and all the rest of that stuff, I just, I just want to express my concern. As a former boss of mine used to say, there's never time to do it right, but there's always time to do it over. And I want to make sure that the city council does it right the first time. Now, please do not question my credentials, because back before most of you were born, I was marching for civil rights in New York City. So, you know, that's not the issue for me. But what I want to make sure is that that ordinance, if it's drawn, is drawn in a way that is lawsuit-proof. You know, in every lawsuit, one party wins and one party loses, but both the lawyers get paid. We don't have the money to waste on that kind of thing. We really don't, and we probably, you know, at least not in my lifetime, ever will. So I appreciate those of you who want to table this until you get the right information that you need. It's not that you don't want to pass the ordinance, it's that you want to do it right the first time. That's important. Secondly, on this property on Central Avenue, that used to be known as Abbott Manor, and it was a nursing home. And years and years ago, there was a whole big thing in the zoning board because they wanted to expand it in a way which would have destroyed the integrity of the historic district that it sits in. And now I will say that the abuse and neglect that that property has been subject to really damages the integrity of the historic district. But I don't think that any property owner should be rewarded by a tax reduction for neglecting to maintain his property. I mean, look, I live in what was once a barn, and I suppose I could just abandon it and leave, and several years, and stop paying my taxes, and a few years later, come back and cry on the shoulder of whoever it is who has the shoulder you cry on, and get a reduction in my taxes. I have to tell you, I don't believe that's fair. The city is losing money on that, and it's money that the city cannot afford to lose. There's one other thing on my mind, I'm a little confused. Well, next week I'll be 80, so I'm entitled to do a little bit of this. But we currently have a mayor who has a confidential assist, confidential aide. And I understand that there was a move to increase the salary line for that position. I don't know what happened to it, I've been out of town getting cancer treatment back and forth. And now we have a proposal for a chief of staff. We currently have a city administrator, as far as I know, or we are supposed to, according to the charter. We have, in the charter, we have a city administrator, we have department heads and so on. And I am left to wonder, what is the difference between a chief of staff to the mayor and a confidential aide to the mayor and the city administrator? Isn't the city administrator supposed to function as the mayor's chief of staff? That's the impression I get by just a quick look at the charter this morning. I'm not, I'm not sure that this has been thoroughly thought through, and I certainly need, understand the need to untangle the various webs that have been woven in the city over the past several years, and deal with all of the messes that you hear about every time you come to a council meeting, and some that you hear about on other occasions. I certainly understand that, but whether it needs another permanent, full-time position to do that, I'm just uncertain about. I hope that there will be a city administrator in place very quickly after you take office, Mr. Mayor-elect, and my congratulations, as you know. And I hope that things can get sorted out, and I know it's going to take time. You know, what takes time to get messed up can't be fixed in 24 hours. I mean, even Hercules needed more than 24 hours to clean out the aging stables. Gosh, my chairlift makes a noise like that. But I would urge that, especially given the financial situation the city was in, we go slow and easy with creating new positions and creating salary bands when we're not sure that we have the money to provide the resources to allow our kids to use the high school gym on Saturday afternoons, for that. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
We just need to, for clarification purposes, the office of the mayor does not have a confidential aide, and it was someone on the council level that asked for a chief of staff position, not the office of the mayor. Thank you.
My name is Emet Diaz, I live at 328 Watson Avenue. My concern is the Recreation Department. I thank you, and I want to appreciate the fact that you are looking into the funds for the gym for my child, who will be extremely happy to know that we no longer have to wait for a phone call as to whether or not he can attend basketball practice. I do, however, have a concern about the staff. I understand that they have misappropriations, but there are misappropriations in everything. It's not just one single department. If you are going to subject one department to misappropriation, you should do it for all. And the fact of the matter is, I am actually born in Ullinburg Hospital. I'm a resident, I'm an employee, and I'm a mother whose children go to Plainfield's public schools. I have worked with pretty much all of the staff at Recreation. I know all of them, I have volunteered with them. It is concerning to me that we can vote on things to move monies, not realizing the trickle-down effect that it has on all the programs. And we need staff that cares, we need staff that's going to volunteer long hours on Saturdays and Sundays with us, the parents, that are going to sit there and do all the additional work that has to be done to get those fund raisers together, to get the foods to the concession stand, to get everything done. I cannot speak for whoever's going to take any possession. I don't know them, I don't know if they have any children currently in any of Plainfield's programs, but I can speak for those staff that are in Recreation, and I have worked with them. Their children... Their children are in there along with mine. And I feel as though we should at least consider and review anything that has to do with transfers or funds or appropriations of money, not only just for programs, but also for the staff that lives and cares not only for their children in the program, but those other children, like mine, who go there for every season, who love all of Recreation Program, and who love to see the same people, saying hello to them by name, knowing each child and each parent. And I feel it's important that, please, administration, council, please review any and all information from us because we need to keep the people that are working the longest hours and the most time with our children still here to do the same work that they've been doing. All I ask is that you please review, at least consider reviewing, the appropriations for Recreation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more, say, any more for the agenda floor? Seeing none, I'd like to take a motion to close.
Madam President, I make a motion to close the hearing, very nicely, and good one. May we adjourn immediately?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? I just have a comment to administration in reference to, I'm just a little appalled that we're just hearing about this program being shut down and about staff not being funded from the Recreation Program. When we talk about building programs for our children, we're actually taking them away with no explanation, especially an explanation to the council. I think it's so unfair. I think it's, it's so unfair that this young lady stated that they're waiting for a phone call before their children to know whether they can go and play basketball?
Same, same.
It's just, it's just appalling. I mean, I believe that you guys should have contacted us, sent us an email, and let us know that this was happening. At least I didn't know. I don't know, I'm not, I'm speaking for me, I don't know if any of the council members were aware of this. It's, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing. So I urge, I urge you to find the money for these programs.
Madam President, I make a motion to close the gym fixing session so we can go into regular meetings. I think the clerk would like to have a few minutes to make sure that everything is right. About how many?
Don't worry about that. The motion's on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries?
Thank you.
You want to take about 15 minutes break? Please, Mr. Clark, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember's President for the regular meeting of the Member 12, 2013. Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Councilman Matt?
Here.
Councilman Storch?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Chairman Reed?
Here.
Council President Rivers?
Here.
We have all members present and informed.
Thank you. Will you please rise for the pleasure of reading?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Unguardly ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the life of the spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
Amen.
We have no court or minutes. We have no ceremonial items. Mr. Clark, are there any communications from the mayor? There's none. Is there? None? Okay, thank you. Any other communications, invitations, Mr. Clark?
No, there aren't.
Reports of special committees?
There are, Mr. Clark. Last any council member has any reports of special committees they'd like to sign at this time?
Unfinished business? I'm sorry, unfinished business? None? Okay, Mr. Clark, can you please read the changes for the record?
Yes. From the agenda's fixing session, there was a resolution dealing with street encroachment that will now be identified on the agenda as Resolution R366A-13. Now, it was agreed upon to be placed on the consent agenda. And we have Resolution R385-13, which was removed from the agenda, which was, did not have consensus during the agenda fixing sessions. So as such, will be moved from the regular meeting agenda. As far as the consent agenda is concerned, those items are identified as Resolutions R363-13, R364-13, R365-13, R366-13, and R366A-13, R374-13, R378-13, 79-13, and 80-13, R383-13, R386, R387, R388, R389, and R390-13, were all agreed upon to be placed on the consent agenda. Unless a council member or citizen still requests it be removed from the consent agenda. Those are changes on the regular meeting agenda.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, would you please? I'm turning it over to the chairman.
Thank you. I assume it didn't diminish our audience very much, and I'm glad of that. And I'll move to the floor quickly because this is 10 after 10. I'm doing consideration of a public hearing and second reading and final passage of an ordinance for adoption, MC 2013-09. Under consideration of an ordinance for passage on the second reading, I call up for second reading and ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 13 Streets and Sidewalks, Article 6 Encroachment on Streets and Sidewalks, Section 13, Colon 6, Dash 1 of the Municipal Code of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, in request that the clerk produce an affidavit of publication and at the same time, read the ordinance by title.
Clerk's Office concurs with the reading of the ordinance by Chairman Reed. Further certifies this ordinance was published in Courier News on October 19th and in the Star Ledger on October 21st, 2013.
I further move that a public hearing be held on the said ordinance, but it needs a second.
Second.
Out of favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's further now open for a public hearing on this ordinance, MC 2013-09. Madam President, seeing no one come to the mic, I move that the hearing be closed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension, motion carries?
Madam President and my colleagues, I move that the ordinance be adopted on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Mr. Clark, may I have a roll call?
Madam President, roll call on MC 2013-09. Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Grease?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
That she monitors this ordinance to be adopted on the second reading.
The floor is now open for public comments limited to resolutions, motions, and ordinance to be introduced on first reading. Please be advised that a total time of 30 minutes will be allotted to permit members of the public to comment on resolutions and motions considered this evening. Each figure will be permitted a maximum time limit of three minutes to comment. Members of the public may speak once during this segment of the meeting, appearing under resolutions and motions. The time allotted on each item is non cumulative. Extension of three minutes, a three-minute time limit will be granted only at the discretion of the City Council President or upon a majority vote on the, I'm sorry, or upon a majority vote on the members present. Floor is open.
I'm having a search in Fifth Street, which you know, I'll be very brief. It's a few hours late, and this Council Reed has to get home. This ordinance, R381-13, refers to East Second Street from Taro Road to Plainfield Avenue. I've spoken about this one previously in pursuit. All streets west of Park Avenue are known as West. The Second Street, which would be West Second Street. I hate to see something which is sloppy in its wording to be passed by this council. You have to be professional, and when you keep passing something which isn't professional, that is wrong. In the same vein, once again, the, the ordinance, 213-17, if you have a device on the Corporation Council that this particular proposed ordinance may be perfected and you're going to review it before you can pass it, and a service can wait one month. I think you should table it. Thank you.
Any more? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close?
So, move. I recommend, I got one person coming up.
Jeffrey Dunn, 537 Belvedere Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. I'm calling, speaking in regard to the police officers who have been promoted. I think that we need to understand that basically, these officers who have been in our service for quite some time have been positioned for advancement, they have dedicated time, and they have basically shown their dedication to the city of Plainfield, and I think we should honor them with, again, keeping them, motivating them, and having them as leadership. Again, by the best of the time they have, I think that basically the city of Plainfield deserves experienced police officers in these leadership positions. Also, I want to make clear, in reference to my earlier statement, that I was not focusing my focus about just minorities and women. I was talking about small business. Small business, which is known for the creation of jobs. Small business, which is known for economic stability of municipalities. Small business, which is the foundation of this, again, this community and many others. Also, in regard to the business services, bottom line, the small businesses need assistance. They need support. They need guidance. They need the SBA, the SSDC, and SCORE to maintain their level, to go to another level of empowering the businesses so that they can do business, hire people, and do it right. Do it well, do it efficiently, do it with the latest technology. I thank you for basically thinking about these police officers, also considering these small businesses so they can do what they need to do. I ask all of you to consider strongly, in reference to supporting our business community as well as supporting our police community so that we can basically make this town a better city, with better quality of life that, again, that we deserve and we should have and that we will have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I want to speak, 101345 East Second Street, Plainfield, with regards to that East Second Street repaving. What I think is sloppy is that myself, as well as others that live in that area from Taro Road down, have to get wheel alignment, struts, flat tires, everything that is involved with poor road grading. There are enough mobiles, you could run the Olympic ski down from Leland Avenue to Taro Road. It's a minor incident that west of, West Second Street doesn't start until before Central Avenue. From that point to Plainfield Avenue is just a matter of blocks. Paved East Second Street, I don't care how far you go down, but you need to do something about that street. That end of town has been neglected for years. They've done some repaving over by Johnson Avenue, that area. East Second Street is a main roadway coming from Scotch Plains, Westfield, Route 22, Taro Road. And when you get to East Second Street, no, you're in Plainfield. You need to do something about East Second Street.
Thank you.
Good evening, Johnson, Reverend Jason Greer, 355 Leland Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. I just want to stand amid comments in regard to the promotions of the police officers. I just ask if there is money in the budget, money to become for the budget, that we try to keep those gentlemen that have been promoted in the positions he looks to are. I think it was a very good promotion, a very diversified promotion with seven good men that probably worked hard and earned that position. We can find money for any other thing in the community. I think that if we can find the money to budget these seven men as lieutenants, I think it would be a great idea to keep them.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Nuno Carvalho. I'm a city resident. I'll just say 1400 Block and South Avenue for privacy purposes and what I do for a living. My message is more for the city council, not the administration, solely because the administration is coming to an end. And this applies more to you here as a council. It's inappropriate, as a police officer and as a union member and an executive board member, for me to comment on whether or not these promotions should be funded or not funded. But what I will say to you is, back in 2003, when I got hired as a police officer in this great city, Mr. Matt, at the time, I believe you were City Council President, I'm not 100% on that. We laid off numerous police officers because the city had a shortfall in its budget. And if you recall, shortly thereafter, in the years to come, the city went through a real rough transition where crime spiked. So what I would ask you is, if you're going to fund these positions, don't make it a temporary funding where next year's budget, we got to decide whether or not we're taking officers off the street and cause more risk to the citizens to keep management afloat. Understand that decision you make today will have an outlasting effect for years to come. And I would just ask, if you decide to fund these positions, please do so in a manner that new officers that are going to get hired still have those positions available to them, so the citizens have that protection on the street. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Taylor Williams, 312 New Street. I too have a problem with the streets. Ever since I've been on New Street, it's been unpaved or patched. It needs to be re-deed. When I come down New Street, as with a lot of people who live on New Street, from Second to Fourth Street, we have to ride on the sides of the street because the middle of the street is very bare. Can you please do something about New Street? Be paved in some kind of way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion called?
Motion. Oh, wait a minute. Donnie Pritchett, 723 Arlington Avenue. On 313, those two 88 buses, they're hangar queens. And I, and I applaud the Fire Department's decision to, to send them to the salvage yard. A hangar queen, by definition, is a, is an airplane or a helicopter. It spends more time in a hangar than, than in the air because of maintenance problems. We need new equipment. Firefighters are, like, like police officers, are, are facing danger every day as they, as they do that John Forten does. We need to back them up every day. That's all I have to say for now. I'll talk later when, when the regular thing comes up. Thank you.
Is there any more comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close public comments?
So, move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension, motion carries?
Okay, thank you. I offer the, those resolutions that are on this evening's consent agenda, which are identified as R363-13 through R366A-13, R374-13, R378-13 through R380-13. eighty dash thirteen, R three eighty-three dash thirteen, R three eighty-six dash thirteen through R three ninety-one dash thirteen, and move for that adoption on the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, can I have a roll call?
This is our presence of roll call on consent agenda. Council members Brown?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reeves?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Chairman, this consent agenda has been adopted.
Okay, I move to resolution R three sixty-seven dash thirteen, and move for its adoption. Need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
R three sixty-eight dash thirteen, and move for its adoption. Need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
R three sixty-nine dash thirteen, and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
R three seven oh dash thirteen, and move for its adoption. Need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
I offer R three seven one dash thirteen, and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
R three seven two dash thirteen, and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
R three seventy-three dash thirteen, and move for its adoption.
I'll second, but I wanted to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Well, actually, I wanted to see if we could do an amendment to take out the police salary and wages of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, ninety-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. I'd like a motion to amend.
I'll second. It is going to be considered.
Can I have a roll call?
It's motion to amend by Councilman Williams, seconded by Councilman Storch. Councilmembers Reeves?
No.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Brown?
No.
Councilwoman Reeves?
No.
Councilman Matt?
Yes.
Councilman Storch?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reeves?
No.
Council President Rivers?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, I, the fact that the motion failed, Mr. Chairman, President, I do have a comment to make.
Go ahead.
I also have a comment as well.
I mentioned earlier about the issue with transferring public rent, that continues to be an issue for me. And we have done things wrong in the past, and then we realize that things have been done improperly or incorrectly, we should stop it and do it right. And so, this transfer is not the way to do it, the transfer should be able. As far as the funding for the promotion of police officers is concerned, I want people of Plainfield to know that I intend to treat everyone who works for the city of Plainfield with fairness, with respect, and I intend to be even handed. And where promotions are needed, whether it's the Plainfield Police Department, the Plainfield Fire Department, or any department of Plainfield, I will give serious consideration to promotions that are based on need and based on merit. I am a professional, I believe in doing things right. It's not about personal feelings, it's about what is fair and just. And I say that every member of the Plainfield Police Department, since this item pertains to the Plainfield Police Department, you will be treated fairly, you will be treated with respect, and you will get what you just deserve from a Matt administration. And these promotions are disturbing. Disturbing because there is no money, disturbing because you just heard an officer with at least ten years of experience come before the microphone and talked about the likely impact of misusing funds and using it for the wrong reasons, which could have a very negative impact on the number of officers that we have on the streets of Plainfield. I campaigned on providing resources to the Public Safety Department of this city, putting more officers on the beat, more officers on the street, providing more technology to our Plainfield Police Department, and I'm very serious about that. I want to give you the resources that you need, I want to treat you fairly, but I don't want decisions that will injure you, that will affect negatively the department. And I will do everything I can to promote the morale of the department, but what we have before us here is wrong simply because it affects the budget of the city of Plainfield. It affects our ability to use our resources wisely and in the best, most efficient manner. And so, I will consider officers, I'll consider every sergeant, every lieutenant, every captain for promotion based on need, and I want you to know that, that's my intention. Day one, when I come into office, I will look at every member, and where there is a need for a promotion in any department of Plainfield, I will give it the highest consideration that it needs and that it deserves. And so, I pledge that to you sitting in this room, the taxpayers, I pledge that to every officer, I pledge that to you officers that are standing in the back, in the front. And so, that's where I stand on this item that is before us. And I would like my colleagues to reconsider their position on this particular item, which would view towards amending this resolution, to remove it, so that we can do the right thing by Plainfield's taxpayers.
I wanted to make a comment as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
We considered the amendment.
I know. In my, my comment...
Considered the amendment and it lost.
My, my comment has to do, many of you know that I, I serve as the chairperson of the council committee on public safety, so, you know, every month I, I deliver a report. Now, on November first, Friday, the mayor made seven promotions, I just have some comments here, seven promotions to lieutenant, there's more to that. This promotion process had been taking place since before captains, the captains' promotions. Initially, the promotions were going to be made, and several sergeants were going to be skipped to get to the last person who was on the list, but after many rounds of discussing, you know, that was decided against, and all the sergeants were promoted except for two. The newly sworn lieutenants agreed not to take pay raises for at least one pay period because the city did not have the money. Second, the list was never certified with the Civil Service Commission, which means that a couple of days after these so-called promotions, all seven were served letters from the city, from Personnel Division, stating that these promotions were provisional because they were not made in accordance with the Civil Service Commission's rules. We cannot break the law. The police division was short three lieutenants, and with the promotion of seven, the police division now has four extra, which means positions are being created. Police Department has worked very efficiently with the number that they had. We just had promotions. One of the people on the list, who was number two on the list, was skipped over. This was made for reasons that, well, I will post those on my blog, okay? But it's obvious that this promotion, this person who was skipped, will, has exposed the city to a very serious lawsuit. There are specific laws governing our civil service, okay? The oldest was promoted except for this particular sergeant and one other sergeant. So, we now have a police division that has lieutenants in traffic, the Service Bureau, the youth second section, and these were never there before. Additionally, some of those promoted are still doing their same assignments, so they're getting a lot more money than what they were doing as sergeants. And, you know, when I report to you every month, I always tell you who's in the academy, what's, you know, and, you know, and, who's in the academy, who's coming out of the academy. We have several officers, well, several recruits, in the academy. Because of what has happened, there's a freeze. What's going to happen when those young men and women come out of the academy and there's no money for them? We have roughly, out of a hundred and fifty roughly, officers, about fifty of them, or maybe a little bit less, are in supervised repositions. So that means for every two officers, there's a supervisor. The city has been told, I just want to finish...
May I move a second, please?
Let me just finish my comment, let me finish my comment. I'm a council person here and I hope that other people can...
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I'm not taking up part of the time here, all right? So, all I'm saying is that because this has violated Civil Service Commission rules, I don't even know if it's been signed off on, I, I would like to get an opinion from the finance people, I would like to hear a rationale from the police director or a representative. I meet with the police director every month, and every promotion that was going to be good, that he had considered, he said, would be for the next administration. So for this to come up here now, it seems mighty strange, and it's unprecedented, and it's unconscionable, he's one of my favorite words, and I really think that what Mayor-Elect Matt has said makes a lot of sense to the officers who serve here. We have ten people, I think, in the academy, and now there will be no place for him, so those cops that you all want on the street, there's no mon, there would be no money for them. Thank you. Thank you.
I also want to make a comment.
I can tell, I have my comments, all right?
No comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, having been on the council for ten years and served on the Budget Committee for most of those years, this is the most irregular move that I've seen since I've been on the council. When an administration wants to reorganize the police department, or add positions, or take away positions, the way we've always done it, and I'm sure this is not just the last ten years, is we go through a budget process every year, and Mayor Robinson Briggs had two, had eight opportunities, eight years, to add positions, to do these kinds of steps that she's now doing in the last two months of an eight-year term. She did not put it in the budget, the money's not there, so now, if there were, I could understand coming to the council, but in fact, it only came to the council at the last minute. Why is the police director not here to explain what the emergency is? The reason he's not here is because he probably knows he can't justify it, and he knew he didn't want to show up and show his face to deal with this. So here we are, a council that has been given no rationale, no police director to say anything to us, to answer our questions, and yet we're asked to do this, really inappropriate and harmful resolution that's only going to hurt the taxpayers, and it's going to hurt our public safety, because there's finite funds in our budgets. So if we spend more on police administration, on these promotions, it simply means we have less money, we're taking money away from police on the streets. And why? An end-of-term, lame duck favor.
Thank you. May I call up?
I just want to say this real quick, I just want to be clear on one thing, it's not going to affect the taxpayers, because this money has already been budgeted in the police budget, but it's not going to, excuse me, point of order, officers, it's not going to affect the taxpayers, because this money has already been budgeted in the budget. Only thing that has been done has been a redistribution of existing budget funds. I just want to be clear. Excuse me, I have the floor right now, Councilman Storch.
Just create, I'm just correcting an inaccurate comment.
It's an accurate comment, it's an accurate comment, it doesn't matter, it's an accurate comment, and is, am I correct that this money is just being redistributed, redistributed to different lines? The money's already been in the budget, the council has already approved that budget for this year, so it's there.
May I? So, you're actually, you're both correct. The money has been transferred from this year's budget, there's no increase to this year's budget.
It's not.
However, for, for years to come, that is to be determined.
That is to be determined, so we have to stop making accusations that are not true.
It is true that it increases police...
Please, please, may I call up? Yes, go ahead.
But, excuse me, I still have the floor. I gave you guys a chance to talk about it, and I'm, and I have the floor, and we have other council members that want to comment. I have supported the police officers at a hundred and one percent, they all know. So, for some to sit up here and say that, you know, it's, it's, it's going to, it's going to make a difference, it's not going to make a difference in this budget, it's not going to increase the taxes this year. And what I'm saying is, is there's several other, there's several other items on this budget that, on this agenda that we're asking for money for also. So if we're going to be fair, we're going to be fair across the board, that could potentially increase the budget. Look at your agenda. So if we're going to be fair, let's be fair across the board.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms., Councilwoman Brown wants to speak also.
Yes, it's Brown.
You know, I was just, I had a question for our corporate council, I, it was mentioned that it was a violation of civil service.
No, it's, it's...
Is that incorrect?
No, we are, we do not yet have a certified list, that is correct. The employee action forms for these promotions have not been signed, because they cannot be signed unless the council moves, transfers the money into the police salary and wage line. So, the forms are awaiting, in essence, awaiting approval from this, from this governing body, and cannot be signed unless the governing body acts.
But there is no violation of this...
No, no, there is, there is no violation, because the forms cannot be effective, the promotions are pending this, this governing body's approval.
And I'm extremely disappointed also, because if my colleagues felt like this, I mean, we, we get out here in front of the public, and we want to, we want to grandstand and air our dirty laundry. There's emails, we could have sat down, we could have said, okay, I don't, I don't support this, let's find a way to make this, not make this happen or make this happen. I have gotten not one phone call from any of these colleagues, I have not seen one email to, to administration in reference to this transfer. It's wrong. It's wrong. If you had a problem with it, you got your agendas on Friday, at least you should have sent out emails to the administration, or we could have contacted each other. There's no need for us to get out here and grandstand like this, it's wrong. It's wrong.
That's, that's an inaccurate...
May I add something, Council President?
Yes.
I am one of those who believe in what someone once said, that sunshine is the best disinfection. And the notion about discussing this by email and so on and so forth, I think you need to be very careful when you make those statements.
I'll take that into consideration.
To put misinformation out there that there is money in the budget is so wrong. That's not true. The reason this is before us is because there is not enough money in the police budget. And that's why there's a need for a transfer of funds if these positions are to be funded. Plain and simple, the money is just not there. It's not. So those are facts.
Okay, I call up resolution R three seven three dash thirteen, and move for its adoption. I need a second.
Mr. Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Roll call on resolution R two seven three dash thirteen, seconded by Councilman Reeves. Just to note, this resolution requires a two-thirds vote for approval, so requires four votes, five votes in affirmative. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Matt?
No.
Storch?
No.
Williams?
No.
Chairman Reeves?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Resolution fails.
Thank you.
I call up Resolution three, seven, five, dash, thirteen, and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution adopted. I call up Resolution three, seven, six, dash, thirteen, and move for its adoption.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries.
I call up Resolution three, seven, seven, dash, thirteen, and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension? Motion carries.
I call up Resolution R. three, eighty-two, dash, thirteen, and move for its adoption.
Come on, guys. Do you need a second?
Yes, I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension? Motion carries.
I call up Resolution R. three, eight, four, dash, thirteen, and move for its adoption. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension? Motion carries.
Okay. That's all of the items on the resolution side. I move now to ordinance.
Oh, I, I know I'm out of order. I just, we just couldn't hear back here. Did that R. three, seven?
Mr. Capart, Mr. Capart.
Did it fail?
Mr. Capart, Mr. Capart.
We just couldn't hear back here.
Okay, you, you can, afterwards. Mr. Capart. Don't do that. Let it go. Go ahead. Next, go ahead, um, Councilmember.
Okay, you've got it over here.
There's a regulation there.
Let it go. Let it go. Yep, let it go.
Madam President, under introduction of ordinance on the first reading, I introduce the accomplished ordinance identified by MC twenty thirteen, dash, ten, and ordinance amending the schedule of salaries and wages adopted pursuant to Article fourteen, Chapter eleven of the Municipal Court of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, and request the title be read by the clerk.
The clerk's office concurs with the reading of the ordinance.
I move that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, and if adopted, that the clerk shall advertise this ordinance as required by law, and that the second reading of said ordinance shall be held at a regular meeting in the Municipal Court, Council Chambers, located here at three twenty-five Watchon Avenue, on Monday, December nine, twenty thirteen, at eight P.M. or as soon after as the matter may be heard. I need a second.
And this is for, um, twenty thirteen, dash, ten?
Yes. Twenty thirteen, dash, ten, amending the salary.
For the chief financial, um, Councilwoman Brown, you, you, we're on twenty thirteen, dash, ten, amending, amending the salary for the chief financial officer. Can I have a roll call?
Is Councilwoman Brown?
No.
Greaves?
No.
Mapp?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
No.
Council President Rivers?
No.
Ordinance passed.
Just want to make a comment, Chairman Reed. At the end of this meeting, I will make a state, I will put a statement on the record, because government is about what is in the best interest of the city. So I will put a statement on the record at the end of the meeting.
We're one.
Okay. Madam President and colleagues, under introduction of ordinance on the first reading, I introduce the accomplished ordinance identified as MC twenty thirteen, dash, eleven, and ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter two, Administration, Article three, Mayor, to add Section six, Chief of Staff of the Municipal Court of the City of Plainfield, and request that the title be read by the clerk.
Second, if I can. Clerk's office concurs with the reading of the ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, just a second. I move that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, and if adopted, that the clerk shall advertise this ordinance as required by law, and that the second reading of the said ordinance shall be held at a regular meeting in the Municipal Court, Council Chambers, located here at three twenty-five Watchon Avenue, on December nine, at eight P.M. or as soon as, as possible. I need a second, if you can come in.
Second, and let me make some remarks.
Go ahead.
I campaigned for eleven months of two thousand thirteen, and I told all of the people of Plainfield that we're gonna do business differently. We're gonna run a professional organization. That we're gonna make sure we put people in place to bring the resources in to communicate with people across the state, across the county, and do what is right in order that government can function much better than it had for the past eight years. There was no secret to my agenda, to what I said to the people of Plainfield. Everywhere I went, every place, I made my position very clear. And this position will link, will be linked to the community, boards and commissions, to the media, will coordinate communication between the administration and the council, will direct all intergovernmental relations from the city, working with all levels of government, including federal, state, county, the school board. There's a lot that this position will do that's not being done. A very important thing is that I will not be in City Hall in my own way eight hours of the day. I will have staff people to do that. It will be done on a professional level. That's what I said to the people of Plainfield, will give me a mandate of over seventy percent. And I promised the people of Plainfield that I would bring a CFO on the job from day one. And we conducted a, a survey that gave society ranges for municipalities, all around us, for people that are highly qualified and skilled. And because, because I didn't vote for that transfer, which is a bad piece of, of, um, you know, legislation, bad decision, my colleagues decide that they're gonna do to Plainfield what have been done for so many years. And that is sad. It's really a sad, sad thing. And we are not willing to move off the dime and to do what's right. And, um, it's sad, sad, for a city like.
And I, and I'm like, wait. Go ahead, go ahead, Reverend Brown.
I, I just wanna say that, that we had people get up, our president's constituents get up to say that the former administration did not have this. It was voted down by council people that, that was here. So I don't think that when people don't get their way, they should get mad and accuse people of voting something down because they just don't agree with them.
I know that. This is not a confidential position. This is a chief of staff. The roles are laid out.
I take offense in a council member stating that because they didn't vote on a certain issue, that the council is now playing politics. And that's all I'm gonna say. Politics was played all last year also. So, my biggest thing is, let me, let me finish. I don't, everybody, every individual person has the right to vote the way they want to. And I take offense to another council person telling me that I did not vote on a certain in, increase or a certain position because of the way they voted. I would like to go on the record saying I feel very disrespected by my colleague. Thank you. Call for the vote, please.
No, I, I need to make a comment. I, I think in politics, it, it's hard to, it's hard to avoid politics anywhere. Plainfield is no exception. But there are times where we do, where it, we have to try really hard to put it aside. And I wanna give you, to me the most important example of when you need to put it aside, as elected officials. When Mayor Robinson Briggs got elected the first time and the second time, it's no secret, I was not on her team. I, I, I campaigned for other people. Once the election's done, and Mayor Robinson Briggs, and, and her predecessor as well, when they brought their cabinet positions, when they, when they built their team, the attitude has to be apolitical. It has to be, council members are obligated morally to give the new mayor the team that they need, and let them sink or swim, but help them to swim. It's not about council members trying to like, give their preferences or playing politics. When Mayor Robinson Briggs put up her cabinet members over the last eight years, and there were many of them, 'cause we had, we had, we had vacancies and turnover, I voted for every single one of them. And why did I do that? Did I think they were all the best candidates for the job? No. But she deserved to have her team. Mayor Mapp, Mayor-elect Mapp deserves to have his team, and for us to not give it to him, this is just, this is history repeating itself in Plainfield. I've been around long enough to see this very same thing happen, where mayors are hamstrung and the city stagnates. We cannot allow ourselves to get into that position. And I urge my colleagues to just, let's all take a few deep breaths tonight, and all this week, and try to rethink the direction we're going in. Because this is, I, I don't, whoever's gonna be council president next year, what do you wanna preside over? Do you wanna preside over the same thing we've had for the last damn twenty years? No, we don't. Let's say no. Let's figure out how to give this person what they need, and then if we don't like what the ordinances and resolutions that are brought forward by this team, you can vote against them, but give them the team they need to be successful.
Mayor-elect Mapp takes position January first of two thousand fourteen. I don't think not one council member on this panel right here will vote his cabinet down. We will, if we choose to vote not to fund a position that's not in the city's budget right now, it's not voting his cabinet down. So I take offense to my colleague from the second ward, from the second ward stating that we're gonna do the same thing. We will support, well, I'm gonna keep it in the eye. I will support Mayor Mapp in two thousand fourteen in his cabinet. I will go on the record stating that.
I appreciate you saying that.
I have one additional, one additional comment, Madam President. I have to add, or echo what the councilor from the second ward said. When I came back onto this council in two thousand and nine, when I was defeated by the mayor in two thousand and nine, I voted in support of every appointment that she put up for her cabinet. And let me also say this. You've seen people come, uh, people came before this microphone this evening, and you've heard names mentioned. And the politics of the situation has to do with that transfer revolution. Because the pressure that has been, the pressure that folks are forcing on me, that upon who they want, not who I want, is something that I will not tolerate, because that's not why the people negative. And so let's put it on the line. This is not the way to start a new day in Plainfield. And it saddens me that we have to come here and be having this kind of discussion. Then we talk about coming together, the people have given me the mandate and the rule, and I would expect my colleagues to be cooperative and give me the support that I need. But what we're getting is a tremendous amount of pressure for me to do what others would want me to do. And so that's that.
Okay. Anyone else may have the vote?
So we'll call on MC twenty thirteen, dash, eleven, seconded by Councilman Mapp. Councilmembers Brown?
No.
Greaves?
No.
Mapp?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
No.
Council President Rivers?
No.
This ordinance fails on first reading.
Madam President and colleagues, I call up introduction of ordinance on the first reading. I introduce the accomplished ordinance identified as MC twenty thirteen, dash, twelve, which is an ordinance amending the schedule of salaries and wages adopted pursuant to Article fourteen, Chapter eleven of the Municipal Court of the City of Plainfield, nineteen seventy-one, Chief of Staff, bad, and request that the title be read.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, at this time, being that, uh, two thousand thirteen, dash, eleven has failed as a matter of law, uh, two thousand thirteen, dash, uh, sorry, two thousand thirteen, dash, twelve, uh, I recommend that be removed from the agenda as, as a matter of law.
Okay, do I need a red, uh, vote to move a little bit?
Motion to withdraw.
Motion to move it?
Motion to withdraw.
Motion to withdraw.
I need to withdraw that for here.
I'll second it then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension? Motion carries.
Madam President and colleagues, under introduction of ordinance on first reading, I introduce ordinance identified as twenty, MC twenty thirteen, dash, twenty thirteen, dash, thirteen, an ordinance to amend various zoning regulations in Chapter seventeen, land use in the City of Plainfield, off-track improvements, closing, receptive, outdoor storage, and so forth, the poaches and sign. And we request that the title be read by the clerk.
Clerk's office concurs with the reading of the ordinance.
Okay. I move that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, and if adopted, that the clerk shall advertise this ordinance as required by law, and that the second reading of the said ordinance shall be held at a regular meeting in the Municipal Court at three twenty-five Watchon Avenue, on Monday, December nine, twenty thirteen, at eight P.M. as soon, or as soon as possible thereafter as the matter can be heard. I need a second.
Second.
Can I have a roll call? Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Greaves?
Yes.
Mapp?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Ordinance passes on first reading.
Madam President and colleagues, under introduction of ordinance on first reading, I introduce ordinance MC twenty thirteen, dash, fourteen, which is an ordinance to amend various zoning regulations in Chapter seventeen, land use in the City of Plainfield, which include automatic telemachines, buffering and screening, mixed-use structures, non-conforming uses, shade trees, sidewalk signs, and performance standards, and request that the title be read by the clerk.
The clerk's office concurs with the reading of the ordinance, but Chairman Reed?
I further move that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, and if adopted, that the clerk shall advertise this ordinance as required by law, and the second reading of said ordinance shall be held at a regular meeting in the Municipal Court Chambers, located at three twenty-five Watchon Avenue here in Plainfield, on December nine, at eight P.M. or as soon as possible thereafter as the matter can be heard. I need a second.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please? Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Greaves?
Yes.
Mapp?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Ordinance passes on first reading.
Okay. Continuing on ordinance, it's introduction of ordinance on the first reading, I introduce ordinance MC twenty thirteen, dash, fifteen, which is an ordinance to rezone Rock two oh two, Lot one point oh one, and one point oh two, known as seventeen oh one, through eighteen twenty-one, West Front Street, one hundred, dash, one fourteen, Rock Avenue, to the light industrial zone of the city, land use or- light industrial zone of the city, land use ordinance, Chapter 17, and the city zoning map as recommended in the 2009 city master plan, and request that the title be read.
Clerk's office concurs with the reading of the ordinance.
Okay, I move that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, and if adopted, that the clerk shall advertise this ordinance as required by law, and that the second reading of this ordinance shall be held in a regular meeting here at 325 Wachong Avenue on Monday, December 9, 2013, at 8:00 p.m., or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, can I have a roll call, please? Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Map?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Ordinance passes on first reading.
Okay, moving on, Madam President, under introduction of ordinancees on first reading, I introduce the accomplished ordinance MC 2013-16, which is an ordinance to correct an omission of Block 3625, Block 22, which is 1400 South Avenue, from the land use ordinancees, ordinance, Chapter 17, and the city zoning map created through the adoption of MC 201301, establishing the RA Zone, and request that the title be read.
Clerk's office concurs with the reading of the ordinance.
I move that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, and if adopted, that the clerk shall advertise the ordinance as required by law, and that the second reading of said ordinance shall be held at a regular meeting of the council at Monday, December 9, 2013, 8:00 p.m., or as soon as the matter can be heard, and that reading shall be in a regular council meeting at 325 Wachong Avenue. And I need a second.
Second.
Ms. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call? Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Map?
Yes.
Storch?
Standing.
Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Six in favor, one abstaining, but ordinance passes on first reading.
Okay, the final one is introduction, under introduction of ordinance on first reading, I introduce ordinance MC 2013-17, which is an ordinance to amend Chapter 11 personnel, creating Article 20, employment, recovery, and local resident hire in construction projects, economic development, and request that the title be read.
The clerk's office concurs with the reading of the ordinance.
The ordinance be adopted on first reading, and if adopted, that the clerk shall advertise this ordinance as required by law, and that the second reading of the ordinance shall be held at a regular meeting in the municipal court chambers here at 325 Wachong Avenue, Plainfield, on Monday, December 9, 2013, at 8:00 p.m., or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard. I need a second.
I just, can I, can I, just, I think the lawyer had made a recommendation.
Yes, I need a second.
A second.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
I'll just, I'll reiterate once again, like, like professional legal, that at this time, as personally constructed, if the ordinance is unlawful and needs further review, and that's my recommendation, that it be tabled at this time.
Okay, therefore, I move that we table ordinance 2013-17, on the recommendation of our legal counsel, and it'll come back as soon as the legal counsel gives a report in December or January.
Second.
It would not be, that's correct, it would not be voted on this year, but I could certainly provide a staff report as to our progress.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it's been moved in second.
Motion to table, Councilman Reed, seconded by Councilman Map. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Map?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Chairman, this MC 2013-17, as the new chief.
I turn it over to you, Madam President.
Thank you very much.
Council President Rivers, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider one of our resolutions. This is 373, the budget transfer. We heard from one of our residents a concern about paying our bills, and that was specifically recreation, but there's a, there's a list of other, other items that I think we should consider transferring. And I'm talking about information technology, media, economic development planning, recreation, recreational seasoning, seasonal, school crossing, and health benefits.
The resolution is as standard, I mean, you put a motion on the floor. I don't know if you guys, before we get to the motion in second, about, I don't know how, it wasn't too long ago, in Washington, D.C., there was a shutdown by the government. What they wanted to do was pick and choose what they wanted to pass, and the President of the United States said no. Okay, so, and there was kids involved, there were seniors involved, there were veterans involved. Counsel, if we're gonna do this, let's do it right. I love the kids, and they know I love the kids. This resolution is presented from administration for budget transfers for all departments. So, the motion is on the floor? You have a second?
We don't have a second.
We don't have a second.
I had seconded the items.
For these items, the ones that Councilwoman Storch mentioned, to add back money for recreation and recreation seasonal, but it had to be mentioned, yeah.
So, yes, I seconded.
For the amendments, yeah.
Is the, I mean, motion passed, I mean, motion failed last time? Call for the vote? Oh, no, no, call for the vote for the amendment.
No.
Maybe he should read it.
That wasn't your motion for reconsideration, correct, Mrs. Stark?
My motion for reconsideration was a modification of what we've already voted on. But it's, but it's, it's basically the transfer resolution. I just, I just specified the items that were more than a thousand dollars, that, you know, or two thousand, that we, you know, we've obligated to fund, and we need to pay for them. The only one that we haven't obligated is the police, but, but some of these other ones, we, we wanna pay these bills.
Well, we have to pay some recreation.
Government needs to continue. This is, this is one of the ways we can help government continue, in spite of our differences on the police side.
I suggest that you put.
President, I think the next mayor has resolved that issue of the recreation department, and if he was in his position, what's gonna happen, then we're first with respect to using the justice.
But that's a separate.
I'm not the mayor again, so I will wait until January 1st.
Yeah, what you told me that would happen, and recommend that we do not pay the bill this year, and then January 1st, it will be paid.
Well, I have a motion, I have a motion that need, that could be seconded or not, so if there's a second, then we can deal with it, otherwise.
There was a second, but we're leaving out, we're part of this budget transfer.
The proper motion would be a motion to reconsider the resolution as a whole, then we require a motion to amend the resolution.
Right.
Okay, all right, and I, that's the motion I'm making, to reconsider the original resolution, 373.
Do we consider, yes.
Do we consider re73? This motion to reconsider, Councilmembers Brown?
To reconsider, yes.
Reeves?
No.
Reconsider, it's only reconsider, it's only reconsider. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So repeat, repeat with a question.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry, I can't do this.
Councilman Map? Councilwoman Storch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
To reconsider, yes.
Second. Chairman Reed?
No.
Council President Rivers?
Yes, that's just to reconsider.
More favor to repose motion to.
Now the motion to amend, is that correct?
Okay, Mr. Stark has to make a motion to amend.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to amend the resolution that we do not transfer into any of the accounts with the exception of information technology, media, economic development, planning, recreation, recreation seasonal, school crossing, and health benefits. And that the administration get at their calculator and figure out where the, where the money's gonna transfer from, because we'd have to total it up and then transfer an equal amount from the other car.
Unfortunately, we're gonna need a couple of minutes to do the math.
Yeah, understood, after the vote, if it gets that floor. Yeah, that's, that's my, that's my.
He needs a second, a second, roll call.
I don't understand what you're saying.
I don't understand what he's saying.
Maybe after the vote.
Yeah. Your recommendation, Mr. Stark, was what again? Your recommendation was?
To transfer money into those funds that I just specified.
Transfer the money from there.
So let, let the administration.
Figure out what it costs.
If you wrote it in, let them, give them five minutes to figure out the math.
And when you're leaving out the police department and whatever.
Yes, I'm trying to leave out just the police department.
Okay.
No, no, well, not just the police.
Yeah. So the resolution on the floor, as I understand it, is to amend the previous resolution that was adopted, 373, as, whatever it is, 13, and at the same time, eliminate from that resolution the police department, but add a recreation.
Can you mark the vote? Can't do that, can't.
I'm saying.
So I guess we have to.
Call for the vote, yeah.
Order, please.
Just call for the vote, we looking like the Keystone Cops up there. Very embarrassing, move, the motion failed, call for the vote, we're going back to the same thing, call for the vote, please.
This is a motion to now amend.
Yes, amend, the same thing for earlier.
373-13.
Right.
No.
Councilman, the clerk, can you explain what is being voted on? Give me the numbers that is voted on. I can tell you the actual item, but I can't, I would not be able to add the numbers.
A motion to amend, can you call? It already failed, I mean, you guys are, it, it failed. I mean, we're gonna have to put our heads together and come back in January and do what we gotta do. But the motion failed, now we're sitting up here.
Mr. Manchado, who is working the numbers?
I know, let me, please, let me, let me try to add some clarity. What we need to do is, we need to figure out the numbers before the vote, we need to know where they're coming, we know the to line, but we need to know the from line. Let us, let us figure out the from line, and then you have a, then your vote, we'll know exactly what you're voting on. So if you give us five minutes, we can put the numbers together for the council, so you have an issue.
We'll have your recess for 10 minutes.
For 10 minutes. So, all those in favor? Another second?
Aye. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed, any extension, motion carries. Motion to reconvene? Can I get a second? Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension, motion carries. Okay.
We got five.
We ready?
Yes.
Okay, so, my, my motion to amend is going to be stated by the city clerk.
Correct.
Specified, informed. Those items that we wanted to be part of the transfer resolution were information technology, media, economic development, recreation, school crossing, and health benefits, which totaled up to 76, 766,750. It will be taken out of the public works department, the fire department, insurance and street lighting, and all the numbers do add up. So that's the motion.
Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Mr. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. So call on our, to make the amendments as stated into the record. Councilmembers Brown?
No.
No.
Map?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
No.
Council President Rivers?
No.
Motion says, motion to amend, yes.
Thank you. Any councilmen want to make comments?
Yes, I have a comment, yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I think that, you know, our school crossing guards, I think that our recreation programs, and, you know, some of the other items are incredibly important to keep our city running. I think that these, you know, promotions, which, again, were not certified, and I think, as I also stated, I think have left us open to a lawsuit because of the way that these promotions were handled and someone being skipped over, and again, not having, you know, the courtesy of the administration, having anyone here, especially the public safety director, police director, to provide a rationale for why all these promotions are happening in the last couple of months of administration. I think it's just, it's outrageous that they are not here to justify why all these promotions are being done, why someone skipped, and to speak to questions that, that we all have of them. The fire, the fire chief is always here to explain anything that has to do with our budget and with the firefighters who serve us. So, I think that, I'm just really kind of, it's just a sad day that we now have no recreation money, we don't have money actually for school crossing guards, so I, it's just really sad.
Yes, it is.
I'm under the impression that the money for recreation and other, and other activities will be refunded in December.
Shut down tomorrow. We shut down tomorrow.
We need to take into consideration that we have people, we have, we had a budget, and there was transfers to the budget, and we have councilmembers that are doing their due diligence to make sure that all departments are funded. We're making tough decisions right now, hard decisions, decisions that I'm sure some people are not gonna like, but I truly believe that we will come together to make things right. Mr. Cafcardo, I understand how you feel, you love your baseball club, I understand.
This has been my life, we've been doing this game for 28 years.
But it's just.
And y'all telling me y'all stopping this? Y'all happy joking?
But it's all the councilmembers that's stopping it. They're, they're.
We, we all are one, we all are one here.
Right, absolutely.
We all are one. Mr. Cafcardo, please.
Please.
I'm very, I, I, first of all, Madam President, I apologize. Trust me, this is not me.
You have a passion.
This is not me, I truly apologize.
You have a passion.
My mouth is quiet, I'm very sorry.
You have a passion, and sometime you have to allow residents to speak how they feel, and that's why I'm not shutting you down, because this is how you feel. But this is, this is all the councilmembers that sit here right now. This is what's happening to the City of Plainfield. It's just not a very few, this is all the councilmembers.
I just wanna say, I think the council, we all have to take responsibility.
Absolutely.
To do a better job.
Absolutely.
I believe that we can, I really believe that.
That's right.
I'll stake my reputation on it, that going forward, we are going to work together more effectively. I believe it.
Thank you, Mrs. Storch, for being honest. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry.
We gotta have public comments.
Lenny, here's your turn. Thank you, Mrs. Storch. Public comments. Any president or taxpayer of Plainfield is welcome to comment on any governmental item of concern to them during this general public comment segment of the council meeting. Citizens must clearly state their name and address to the clerk. Once the speaker is recognized by the presiding officer to speak, a total of thirty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. Large groups are urged to select a spokesperson to represent them. Each person is allocated five minutes to speak. The presiding officer or a majority of the council may extend the length of time allocated cumulatively or individually. No speaker shall engage in any personally offensive, derogatory, or abusive remarks. The president shall immediately call to order any speaker who violates this provision. An officer from the Plainfield Police Division may remove any disruptive person at the discretion of the presiding officer. Public comments is an opportunity for the public to present their views, both positive and negative. It is not a question or answer period. Neither the presiding officer nor the councilmembers will engage in a back and forth exchange. So speakers are encouraged to present all their views. The presiding officer, as well as any councilmembers, may respond to any comments after such speaker is finished. The presiding officer may refer the speaker to the city administrator or an appropriate department head, and any councilmember may choose to respond in writing to individual citizens. We're at privilege of the floor.
Thank you. An hour and thirty-three, fifty-three, fifty-two. I'd first, I'd like to know which one of you are the Republican and which one of you are the Democrat. This is the worst Congress in the history.
Yes.
As far as I know, and I don't know whether you're running close to it right now, but... I do, I am very disappointed in you turning down the first reading of the ordinance which is to fund, adequately fund a CFO position. One of the big problems this year has been fiscal problems not having a CFO in office, and has been a result reflected in the audit report. I do hope that you do pass this ordinance, or a similar one, the next eighty, so that the new incoming mayor will be able to hire a CFO at the start of his administration, thank you.
Thank you, old Doc.
Agent Cathcart Jr., fourteen forty-eight Hungry Avenue, Plainfield, Georgia. First of all, I apologize to all you, for my errors. I said, as a board member for nine years on the school board, so I understand what you have to do. I've been on that seat where, you know, I had to hear that also, so I truly apologize. I lost a lot of good friends being on the school board, you know, because of some decisions that we made, or that I made. But you're saying no to kids. I have nothing to do with the police officers. I really don't, that, I mean, I, you know, y'all gotta make that decision, but I'm not asking y'all even look at that, I'm saying, just, how can we say no? So tomorrow, while y'all doing what y'all doing, I'm gonna have six or seven years coming to Emerson School, and I have to say, hey, I'm sorry, I can't let you in here tonight. I don't know when I'm gonna be able to let you in, January first? I'm not gonna be able to explain to them, because I really don't understand myself of why I got to turn them away. And look at what we said no to, to, what do you call them, crossing guards. We are saying no to crossing guards. These are wanting to keep our kids safe, to say, come on, yes, no, and we know how people are at seven thirty in the morning, trying to get to work. We are saying no to that. Yes, I have a passion for what I do, I love what I do, I've been doing it for a long, long time. I could care less about money. I do this for free, have done it for free. My hours go way beyond. During the daytime, I'd be in that office most of the time, talking to teachers, and then getting their things together for six thirty at night for when the kids come through that door. Y'all saying no to this? You know what I mean? Never. In all my years in Plainfield, I've done a lot for kids, I've never came to ask anyone for nothing. I did what I could and did what I can done for these kids. I've come to y'all and say, open these doors for these kids. Y'all got to find a way. All together, I don't care what, new administration, old administration. We got to find a way, this got to, uh-uh. You know, like next meeting, I'm bringing them. Trust me. Y'all need to, y'all need to get the, ask the school if they can come here, because I'm bringing them. Trust me when I say I'm bringing them. I'm gonna let them know what's going on. We gonna have these kids in front of you, we gonna have these parents in front of you. Y'all gonna have to turn this, reverse this. You gotta find a way to reverse this. We need to come up together to... Thank y'all, y'all have, be safe getting home and have a great day. Thank y'all so much, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Taylor Williams again, three twelve New Street. Mr. Cathcart, I can feel your disappointment, but maybe is it possible that we could have a rally? Citizens could have a rally and get enough money for our children to have some activities? Is that possible, you think, maybe, since the council got rid of their, you know, activities? Maybe we, the citizens, could have a rally someplace and we all could put in some money and help our children? This is ridiculous. And for you guys to sit up here and bicker back and forth the way you do, it does not make sense. It doesn't make sense. Our tax dollars are paying you, and this is what you do? Not only council, administration at times, or whatever? It's ridiculous. Our tax dollars are paying your bills, your salaries for you to do this to us? It doesn't make sense. It does not make sense. If you raised as much pain about them damn rats that's running around my damn house from the house next door, everything would be alright. Oh, but it's funny to you guys. The rats are running crazy. I put rat poison now around my house, but the rats next door, they having a ball. They having a ball. If you raised as much pain about them damn rats, everything would be a whole lot better. And also, I want to say about this question to answer period, this has got to stop. If I have to get ordinance and petitions out there for people to sign, for us to get answers to our questions every time we come to this mic, you never give us answers. We'll get in touch with you later on, or we'll have somebody call you. That's why we here in the first place, because we go to the departments and don't get answers. So we come here, and still don't get answers. It's ridiculous. And it's gonna stop. Have a blessed day.
Police Department, one twenty-fourty-seven Street. I just wonder if I could get clarification? Would appear that these officers will remain in their positions without extra pay, passing provisionals until such time as money is provided and the state signs off on their certification. Can I get a...
Those questions?
Certainly. The officers, yes, they don't officially take the titles because there are no, the employee action forms have not been effectuated by all the necessary parties, and then one, there are two, sorry, there are four people who need to sign. The city administration, I'm sorry, the city administrator, the director, police director, the personnel director, and the CFO. In this case, the personnel director is waiting for the certification, and the CFO is waiting for, you know, that there are sufficient funds. If there are not sufficient funds, the employee action forms are not to sign.
Any more public comments? See you then.
I make a motion that we close public comments.
Can I just make a motion that we, can I? Is it possible, I'd like to make a motion that we immediately look for emergency funds for recreation?
Second. Is that legal?
Unfortunately.
Why don't we just verbally agree?
It's not acting on a resolution, so...
What can we do to get money for recreation right now, just recreation?
I would confer with the clerk, but my only, yes, we would have to return to our business meeting.
Can I make a motion to reconsider that resolution and a motion to amend it just for recreation?
Recreation to, welcome from already approved.
No, just the motion.
Yes, we need to...
Put that motion on the floor, please.
We had, there were several other items in addition to...
Several other items in addition to recreation that were part of that amendment. This amendment, I believe, would just be for recreation.
Yes.
Can we, I can ask a question, Mr. Clerk?
Can we take a recess?
At any time during the meeting, it'd be a motion to reconsider.
Can I take, can I, can we take a recess for five minutes, please? Can I have a motion to take a recess for five minutes?
Y'all vote, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
All right, Mad President, we hope that we got it.
A motion to reconvene?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
Mad President, I propose make a motion that we reconsider resolution three seventy-three.
Correct, but that motion would actually have to be made, remember, with the presenting.
What was that again?
You voted the negative for that resolution, somebody who voted affirmatively would have to make that motion.
Okay.
Come on, guys.
Are you gonna do it, Adrian?
Adrian, please.
I'll make the motion to reconsider resolution three seventy-three.
Sure.
This resolution adds fifteen thousand.
First we can just roll call the motion reconsider.
Can I have a roll call?
Roll call to reconsider resolution R three seventy-three dash thirteen. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now you have to introduce make a motion to introduce an amended resolution, right? Make a motion to amend resolution three seventy-three dash thirteen to include in the recreation O E fifteen thousand dollars. And to remove from the from fifteen thousand from the line item for one hundred fifty thousand percent.
Which comes out of workers' compensation?
What was that again?
Workers' compensation?
Workers' compensation removed to fifteen thousand, and it's still balanced, correct?
Correct, but I believe the other two are for recreation salary and wages at nine thousand, recreation seasonal salary and wages at twenty-seven, for a total of thirty-six. In addition to fifteen for other expenses.
Yeah, but that was already in the resolution, correct?
Yes, but those are the three items in the item.
Right. So, I make a motion to adopt this, the amendment.
I'll second it. I just want to clarify. The resolution that we voted on, there are three items on the tip side, and there's one item on the from side. There's nothing that we voted on.
That's right. Okay. Just to clarify again, it's recreation salary and wages, nine thousand, recreation seasonal salary and wages, twenty-seven thousand, that equals thirty-six, and then recreation under expenses at fifteen thousand. And that is coming from the one fifty that was already in workers' compensation. So we're deducting that amount from one hundred fifty thousand.
And everything else will remain the same as stated in the original resolution.
Can we have a second, please? Can we have a second, please?
We voted on the other, we voted on the four items.
Yes, come on. Roll call, please.
Need a second?
Yes.
Have a second?
I've got a round second.
Roll call amendments as stated in record. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Yes.
That is unanimous. That resolution with those amendments.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Clerk, a lot of representatives, and the clerks for the record state the items.
Yes, this resolution titled, "Resolucing Authorizing Transfer Between the County Area in twenty thirteen Appropriations to the General Fund of the City of Plainfield." This is identified as R three seventy-three dash thirteen. The only items in this resolution are recreation salary and wages at nine thousand dollars, recreation seasonal salary and wages, twenty-seven thousand, and recreation O E other expenses at fifteen thousand, and that is coming from workers' compensation at one hundred and fifty, we're deducting that amount that amount from the one fifty percent.
This is the amount that is coming from workers' compensation. You don't have to be that from one hundred fifty, this is...
Fifty-one thousand. It's fifty-one thousand coming out of workers' compensation.
Thank you.
Council President, I think we're one vote short, I mean, we moved to reconsider, we moved to amend, now we have to vote on the amended resolution. So we need one more vote.
Okay.
Correct. This one needs to be behind the podium.
Exactly, it's five.
Okay, and the amended resolution is what? Includes everything that we had?
No, the amended resolution only includes the items that were just amended in that amendment, that agent...
Added to...
No, the total transfer now is just those items, just the items, just those rec items, that's all we did.
And the police department?
No, no, just the rec items.
We're just doing rec, that's it. Now we need to vote on the amended resolution, which just includes the rec items.
This resolution, it was just amended just to include the recreation items. So the only thing we're voting on for the resolution as amended for the recreation items, that's it.
Okay, what about the original requisite?
That's what the amendment did, got rid of all those other items. And the police, only the recreation items.
So do we need a motion, or...
Motion to not the resolution as amended.
Make the motion.
I move it, I move the amended resolution.
Second.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Reeves? Matt?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Can I vote no, if it still passed? No, because I don't understand why they're voting.
And Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Six in favor, one in both presidential houses.
Thank you. We need all the motion to adjourn.
Okay, Lenny, you can go home.
Yes. All those in favor? Any opposed, any extension?